Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, I'm so glad to see everyone here this evening. We are now calling to order the Clayton County Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting. The date is February 18th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I will do roll call for the Board of Commissioners to see who is present tonight. District 1.
Here.
District 3.
Here.
District 2.
Here.
And District 5. All right, District 2 is coming on up.
Wait, wait.
All right.
Who is District 5's Commissioner?
I'm sorry, District 4.
Present.
I made you up a district, huh? All right. All right, at this time, we're going to have our invocation, and that's going to be by Pastor Dr. Leon Biller of the Gateway Restoration Church in Forest Park. Thereafter, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for our invocation at this time?
Well, let's go. Father, we come boldly to your throne of grace. We come in a new and living way through the blood of Jesus Christ. We come crying out but to you, Father, for truly you are our Father and we are your children. And Lord, I'm praying for this county, Lord, for its continual growth and prosperity, Lord. Lord, that the needs of the people will be met, Lord, and the leadership will be phenomenal, Lord. Lord, we pray for wisdom, we pray for understanding, we pray for knowledge, Lord, that they may guide this county to the place it is going to be, Lord. We know with you all things are possible, and we're believing for those possibilities right now, Lord. Lord, that there will be no hunger in this county, Lord. There will be no homeless in this county, Lord. There will be no rejection in this county, Lord, but there will be peace, Lord. For we know where there is peace, there is the ability to grow into magnificent things, Lord. And Lord, we're believing in you for those things, Lord, for you are God, and above you there is no other. Lord, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Next, we will have the adoption of the agenda. We have two items that we need to add, so we'll let Mr. Chup come up and give us those items.
Good evening. I had to check my time, Commissioner Henry.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Board. First, I'd like to add is Ordinance 2025-16, which is an ordinance adopted under the Home Rule powers granted to Clayton County pursuant to Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of 1983. And this, among other things, this is the second read of the pension ordinance that was on the first read that you all had last week. It just was supposed to be on here again.
Which number is that?
This is Ordinance 2025-16.
Is that?
Yeah, I have.
No, that's the second one.
So there are two tonight, Board members?
Yes.
There's one, you said that's the ordinance, and the other one was what now?
The second one is Resolution 2025-35, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to participate in a professional services agreement between Denmark Ashby LLC and Carpe and Clay Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which federal lobbyist services will be rendered on behalf of the county. And this is a request to participate as part of the pro-rata share with the school board. This lobbyist firm has been in place for several years to help with the county's attempt to recover aviation fuel tax, to change the federal legislation with that. The school board has a professional services agreement. We pay, or the request is to pay $1,834.73 a month to help with the pro-rata share of the lobbying services to help get the aviation, change federal legislation to restore the county to get aviation fuel tax.
All right.
Yeah, is this different from what the agreement we had before?
No, this is the same entity. It's just that this, the request was, this was going to start in February. They have already started. The school board and some of the other municipalities have already participated. They just want to make sure that we're still on board with helping to share in that cost. The total costs are broken down on Exhibit A. School board is the largest share. They pay a little bit more than $2,600. And then each of the cities, Lake City, Riverdale, College Park, Lovejoy, Forest Park, and Jonesboro, all participate with a little bit towards the total cost of the lobbyist services.
How far along are we with this? Have we been given a report?
They give ongoing reports about what's been going on. I believe Senator Warnock had had some, tried to do some stuff, but it's still an uphill battle to try to get this. But, you know, this is what they're here for, to try to help lobby on the county's behalf to help change the federal law.
So is this something we'll do every, renew every year?
This is a one-year agreement.
All right, Board members, are there any other questions at this time?
I just wanted to confirm, this contract is just for federal legislation?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so at this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the two added, how do you want me to state, just two added items, with the two added items on to the agenda?
Wait, restate that, because, let me ask the question first, Chair. Because I only have 2025-35.
Right.
Where is, is 16, I don't see 16 in the agenda.
16 was actually omission from the agenda. It should have been on your agenda for this coming meeting because the ordinance change required two readings as part of the home rule change.
So it was read on the first?
It was read on the first, 2025-16. It was inadvertently admitted from this agenda, which is why we're adding it. But it's been advertised to be read at this agenda meeting today.
This is to be the second.
That would be the second.
Okay.
So it would be a motion to adopt the agenda with the two additions?
Correct.
Second.
Am I, I made the motion? I thought you. Okay, second, are in discussion at this time?
Oh, yes. I wanted to...
Oh.
For Item 44, the public hearings for HB 581, I just wanted to get clarification if we are allowing speakers to come up to the podium if they did not sign up the way we do in zoning hearings?
No, we're not.
That's the part of the public hearing.
Yes.
The public hearing, I believe, the way that had been done, both in the fourth as well as this morning at 11:00.
So we have a motion on the floor, so that's not a part of this motion. Can we vote on this first and then answer that question?
The motion is for the agenda.
Yes, but that, you can go on, but again.
We were adding this.
Yeah, and I have one too.
We were adding this.
Yeah, but we were adding, okay, go on, go on.
I do have, I do have one added, Madam Chair. I'd like to, for discussion, remove Item 13 to the regular agenda.
Okay.
I'm clear.
So maybe the first would be a motion to add the two items that I requested to the agenda first.
Yes, we're going to do that first.
Right.
All right. In discussion on that. Please, also, ladies and gentlemen, all cell phones need to be cut off at this time. All cell phones need to be cut off at this time. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, do you want this motioned over again, or?
No, we can go on without a motion. We discussed it, and then we can, at this time, I'm going to call for the vote.
Actually, I believe that the original motion was a motion to add it and approve the agenda.
And approve the agenda.
So there would be a revised.
Oh, and you took 13, oh, okay.
Right, so maybe a revised motion to add the two items that I discussed on to the agenda, and then a separate motion to adopt the agenda with those added.
So...
But he's just moving 13, okay, with those added. So the first motion, let's do the first motion first.
Correct.
With the added.
So I move that we put 2025-16 and 2025-35 on the consent agenda.
And I second it. All right, in the discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Now we need another motion.
Okay, so we've already have Item 13 to the consent, so...
We moved it over.
So I move that we approve the agenda as stated now.
All right, and I second the motion. In the discussion at this time? All right.
Can I add a motion to allow for the residents to be able to speak if they arrived after 6:00 PM?
Um...
Go ahead. It's two separate agendas.
So, yes, you can, but the first, I would say, let's take that one first.
And then we'll...
And then we'll do the motion to adopt the agenda to include those who are able to come after. So it would be a substitute motion.
So let's go on to, let's go to the vote. So all in favor say aye.
Well, actually, her motion would be first to, so withdraw the motion to adopt the agenda, and then a motion from Commissioner Reeves to allow Item 44 to include persons who can't, who arrived after 6:00 PM.
Well, let me ask this question before I do that. Is, because she's speaking in a special called meeting. Is the special called meeting and our regular agenda separate?
No, I think the way I understand her motion was that she is asking if, at this meeting, people can come and speak without having signed up. Is that correct?
Correct.
For special call, okay. Okay, so, and we will put that on our regular?
Well, it would just be, instead of the clerk saying that only those people who signed up, she would just, you would be opening it up to have people other than those who signed up to speak today.
Got you. Commissioner Reeves, I will allow you to make that motion.
I move that we make an amendment to Item 44 to allow for speakers, so that we can conduct a public hearing similar to our zoning hearings, where folks can come up and do not have to sign in to speak.
So is there a second?
Second.
In discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right.
Okay, so now you can adopt the agenda with...
All right, this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion at this time? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next on the agenda, we will have presentations and proclamations. The first proclamation will come from Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry for the Clayton County celebrates Government Communication Day. And the next proclamation will come from Clayton County recognizes Antoine G. Aiken and Jeremy C. Aiken, owners of Eggs Up Grill, as they celebrate their two-year anniversary. And that will come from our Vice Chairwoman, Elena Reeves. Will you, Board members, will you all come to the front? And Communications Department, will you please come up?
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors and celebrates government communicators February 18th, 2025. Whereas the role of professional government communicators is to inform, educate, and engage their communities. Government communicators serve as the creative minds behind advisories, press releases, managing statements, preparing talking points, communications plans, media relations, creative design, social media content, public relations, marketing, and storytelling. And whereas February 21st, 2025, is recognized as Government Communicators' Day, honoring communications, marketing, public relations, and creative service professionals in the Office of Communications and Print Services, who collaborate to ensure effective, impactful communication in government that creates trust and inspires residents to take action, stay engaged, and informed. And whereas the award-winning Clayton County Office of Communications and Print Services is recognized by the Public Relations Society of America for excellence in branding and in-house marketing, planning and execution of strategic and effective communication, marketing, and public relations, building and maintaining relationships, calls to action, building and increasing awareness, engaging and fostering healthy and two-way engagement, using best practices in research, planning, implementation, and evaluation. And whereas on Government Communicators' Day, Clayton County is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators' professionalism, dedication, commitment, hardy work ethic, and enthusiasm, as well as creativity. Now therefore I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby celebrate the gifts, talent, skills, creativity, and professionalism of our government communicators, and encourage all to join in celebrating February 21st, 2025, as Government Communicators' Day, and to participate in the employees' Government Media Relations Training on February 24th, and to participate as citizens in the Clayton Connected Government Communicated Services Programs and Initiatives Event on February 24th. Sign up for the county's newsletters and Clayton Connected podcasts. Follow Clayton County Government social media channels. Watch CCTV 23 and 99, and attend community meetings to stay engaged and informed. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 18th day of February in the year 2025. Whereas Eggs Up Grill Mauro, located at 1990 Mount Zion Road in Mauro, Georgia, has been deeply rooted in the community. The owners, Antoine G. Aiken and Jeremy Aiken, have demonstrated a strong commitment to fostering community connection, and has created employment opportunities for 30 Clayton County residents, and enriching the local economy. And whereas in 2024, Eggs Up Grill in Mauro achieved tremendous success, serving nearly 75,000 guests, solidifying its reputation as the leading brunch destination in Mauro. And whereas the Aiken Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded by Antoine and Jeremy Aiken, has established the Aiken Foundation Student Access Fund, which provides scholarships for student entrepreneurs in Clayton County schools. And whereas Eggs Up Grill Mauro celebrates its second year, the community recognizes the continued dedication of Antoine and Jeremy Aiken to serving the residents of Clayton County with hospitality, generosity, and a commitment to making a positive impact. Now therefore be it resolved that we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Eggs Up Grill Mauro on its second anniversary, and commend Antoine G. Aiken and Jeremy Aiken for their leadership, philanthropy, and unwavering dedication to the community. May their success continue to grow, and may their impact be felt for years to come. Now therefore I, Commissioner Alana Reeves, Vice Chair, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby celebrate the second year anniversary of Eggs Up Grill Mauro, Georgia. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 18th day of February, 2025.
Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board with a total time of 30 minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board. I would also like to note this is separate from the public hearing comments.
Thank you very much, Courtney. First, on our public comment list, we have Delissa Buffington. All right, again, Delissa Buffington. Next will be, are you, you coming up? Oh, you're good, okay, yeah, she's good. All right, next will be Ernest, Ernest Boyd. Ernest Boyd.
Oh, Joyce.
Okay, I got Ernest and Joyce, but it can be either, are you coming up, Ms. Joyce?
Now.
This, okay. All right, next is Theresa, I'm sorry, Susan, Susan Hams. Next is Teresa Tally.
When you use the wrong word in a sentence, it can significantly alter the meaning of a sentence, potentially causing confusion or conveying an unintended message to the listeners. On February 4th, 2025, at the Commissional Board meeting, I said Lopez Roofing was paying a fee to code enforcement, but his signs are never removed. I should have said Lopez Roofing has paid his fines, however, his signs are still posted throughout the county. I am not alleging that anyone is getting paid as a bribe. In my public opinion, I thought once a fine is paid, the signs will be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Next is, is this Deandre Johnson? Next on the list is Karen Murray. Karen Murray.
I'm a neighbor, I don't come to the chair. It's probably the same.
Yes, ma'am, that's fine, that's fine. Next is Esther, I want to say, is this Percy?
Ms. Esther.
Did you want to speak for public comment?
But I can ask a question first. What do I want to speak about is, um, I...
I'll put you on the list for the HB. Did you sign both lists? And if not, I'll put you over here.
I only said one, I said the one.
Okay, I'll put you on this list as well. All right, all right. All right, no problem. Next is Linda Ingram. Linda Ingram, all right. Next is Ms. Mia Ballinger.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mia Ballinger, Clayton County, District 4. I stand here before you all in honor of 19-year-old Eric Holmes. On November 21st, 2022, Eric Holmes was murdered by former Clayton County Police Officer Justin Stevens over an alleged stolen vehicle. I ask you, was this vehicle worth Eric's life? Officer Stevens received seven felony charges for the murder of Eric Holmes, yet this officer was allowed to walk free from the Clayton County courthouse. I ask you, what can we do as a county to prevent a tragedy like this one from ever happening again? Now, don't get me wrong, all cops are not bad. We have many amazing and loving officers here in Clayton County. Shout out to Captain Brandon Green. I have yet to meet our newest Sector 4 Captain, Captain Williams. Thank you to our awesome Chief, Chief Kevin Roberts. Thank you to Sector 4s, Sector 1, 2, and 3, for your service, for putting your lives on the line to protect us. Thank you to our Sheriff's Department, thank you for your service, Officer Armando Mendoza, Deputy Rick Dally, Officer Henry Laxton, and other countless officers that lost their lives while protecting Clayton County. Thank you to Tim Sweet, I call him Sweet, he's a sweetheart, Tim Sweat, our awesome fire department, and all of our first responders. I must say a special thank you to District 3's newly elected Commissioner Allen for advocating for our Clayton County special needs children and adults. I would come and give you a hug, but I only have like a minute and 12 seconds left. I am personally inviting the Board of Commissioners to a pizza party for our special needs children March 28th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, located at Chuck E. Cheese, 335 Upper Riverdale Road in Jonesboro. This event will be hosted by Jonesboro City Councilman Alfred Dixon and myself. It will be an honor, District 3 Commissioner, if you would attend and speak to the children and parents about your vision. Even though I know you're in District 3, and that's in District 4, it would definitely be an honor and a blessing. I have a few flyers, if I may give them to you. Once again, thank you for your time. Congratulations, ladies, on your newly elected, you know, seats and whatnots.
Thank you, Ms. Ballinger, you can just give them to the officer. Thank you. Next is Va'Kelvin Holmes.
So nice to meet everyone. Dr. Alika, Chairwoman, I'm thankful you're here. The month I met you before, I have no bad words against you, my buddy running against you, but I wish you best for the county, okay? Because that's what it's for, it's for the county, not anything with you guys. Ms. Hambrick, I've heard about you. Tashae, welcome aboard, Mr. Allen's wife. I know I get on your husband, I don't stand here to apologize, but he understands what it is, it's nothing but great feelings. All I want is the best for this county. Elena, I've heard about you as well. All I want is the best for this county. Mia spoke about my baby. You guys already know what it is, it was seven charges. No way that's going to be explained. I don't stand here to tell you about Eric, because Mia did. For the residents of this county, they may see me, so I may say, what is she saying? I'm saying whatever, I don't know, but I stand for everybody, and I stand for this county. And it's only because of my baby that I found out about this county. So I say a lot of times you guys are elected in. Unfortunately, I got blood in it, my heart in it, and I lost it that day. I heard you guys say something about on the jury, I don't want to get kicked out of your county, I can promise you, you won't see me like that in this building, because this is for the residents. Y'all know I do my thing online, I'll tag you, whatever I have to do. I'm just asking, do the right thing by the people, okay? And officials in this county, whatever's going on at their courthouse, them taxpayers paying for it. So regardless if the man walk out, I can't go too far, because I'm going to... So, regardless if the man walk out, I can't go too far, because I'm going to court for it, okay? So, we are, we will be seeing court in a few months. Um, so I can't go too far, but the citizens don't know sometimes, they pay for this. Chief Roberts, I don't have nothing against him, I won't say his name like that. Um, I'm thankful for that man, though, okay? I'm thankful for the first responders in this county. I'm thankful for everyone that tried to speak out in whichever way they can, for the officers or whoever. I'm thankful for them, and I'm thankful for the few citizens that stayed, okay? Tashae, you mentioned something, because I follow everything with this county. It is like, this is my county now, you know, because my baby died out here. And if anything means something to me, it's the right thing being done by this county, and that's what I stand for. I don't want to call nobody out, I don't want to go against you, but I say if it was good for my son to die like that at work, come on, man, come on. Mia was in so much into, um, this, uh, special needs. Tashae, to see you look up on it and actually do something about that, that means something to me. Because I tell parents, we all parents, no matter if you took a gun loss, no matter what loss you took, a officer, I respect these officers out here. They... Y'all got some good ones, I've met a few. Thank you for picking that up. Do what you got to do to work for these citizens in this county, because as long as you make the county better, the officers will be better. I seen something in here about agenda, I just want to make sure I give something, because like I said, it's about the county. My baby gonna get his justice, he get it every time I speak. Um, it say the recommendation to execute the application and approve the amount for the PTS disability benefit. Whatever y'all can give these first responders, give them. You got to understand what they are facing, what they are coming into. They got to go see somebody else's baby like they seen mine, and if it's PTSD they suffering with, I want the best for them. So, if I speak anything on this agenda, it's saying, do something for your officials. Do something for these first responders. If it's PTSD, what better can you get? You'd rather treat them for PTSD than have to deal with a lawsuit, okay? So, justice for Eric Holmes, thank you, Mia, I love you, and it's gonna be all right.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes.
Thank you.
Next is Lisa Gonzalez. I'll put you on another list, that's fine. Did you sign both of them, Miss Gonzalez?
I did.
Okay. Next is Greg Wellborn. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Next is Dominique Grant.
Hey, y'all. I don't need yielded time, but thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, nice to see y'all. Dominique Grant, District One. Um, so, I'm gonna mention the House Bill, but that is not the primary focus of my comments today. Um, I have been a proud owner in Clayton County. My husband and I were excited to grow our family and invest in this community, purchasing a new build back in two thousand twenty, um, with the hope of growing and thriving here. However, over the past five years, our property taxes have nearly quadrupled. We recently learned that a significant portion of this is due to the fact that the Tax Assessor's Office consistently have been over-assessing home values by more than twenty percent. This is not just an issue for the community in Clayton County, but for people all over the country. We see where we at. Meanwhile, at the start of the school year, Clayton County was the talk of Georgia, not for progress, but for the overwhelming number of teacher vacancies in our schools. Every day, I watch community members pleading online for support and resources, and those pleas often go unanswered. Yet, despite these urgent needs, our county budget prioritizes law enforcement, while the Sheriff's Office and local police making up over half of the budget. And let's be honest, the conditions of Clayton County Jail are being whispered about as worse as the notorious Fulton County Jail. In fact, Clayton County is neck and neck with Fulton County in lawsuits and the horrific treatment of people detained there. This is not something we should be competed in. And on a personal level, I, for work, I go toe-to-toe with Fulton County on a daily basis to fight for our people. Now, with an attempt to opt out of the homestead exemption, it feels like Commission is asking our homeowners to bear the heavy burden, or the heavier burden, while basic needs in our schools and communities continue to remain unmet. Where's the accountability? Where's the investment in the people who make this county what it is? And I have several questions after reviewing the contracts about that, um, that were listed in the agenda. We cannot continue to go down this path of financial strain and neglect. I urge y'all to reconsider this attempt to opt out of the homestead exemption, and to also refocus on the policies that serve the citizens, not just the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Uh, Members of the... Madam Chair, Members of the Board, I went to your retreat at Stone Mountain, uh, that needs to be talked about later, but tonight's comment is on your idea of putting the people of Clayton County, homeowners, under a mandatory trash pickup, with billing coming from the Tax Commissioner's Office, Tax Commissioner Smith, and again, coming from that office looks like another tax increase. Let me say this, three households of the Garber family, my family, only use one trash can pickup, and the majority of trash and litter in it comes from what we, as a family, pick up on the side of the road. I'm sure there are other families like mine here, and you, Board of Commissioners, are gonna tax them where no tax is necessary or deserved. Where should you, Board of Commissioners, be levitating this mandatory trash pickup decree? Forty-one percent of single-family homes in unincorporated Clayton County are owned by absentee landlords. All businesses have trash pickup, most all homeowners have trash pickup, most everybody has trash pickup. The majority of households that contribute to our trash and litter problem comes from the single-family homes owned by absentee landlords. There is... There is where you, Board of Commissioners, need to levy your mandatory trash pickup. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, sir, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Next is India Gray.
Hello, everyone. My name is India Gray. I live in unincorporated Jonesboro, District Three. Um, my issue, I have two right now, is sidewalks and availability of those and the upkeep of them. To me, I think that people should be able to walk to a grocery store, walk to Family Dollar, walk up the street to go visit their friends, grandma, whatever, and be able to safely do that without having to get hit, without having somebody squeezing over into a yard, and there's mud somewhere next to them, and they just want to go outside, even go for a jog, for a run, for anything. I think we need to invest more into sidewalks and street lighting so that people can be out and enjoy their community physically. That is my... I have a really big thing about that, of being able to just walk safely. Secondly, I personally, I moved here in two thousand twenty-two, and that July. I went and was specifically looking for a home here in Clayton County. I did end up buying a home here in Clayton County, but it really did not meet my personal needs. I now have a whole stack of land, I don't really want to have to mow. I now see that there are rental buildings being built along Jonesboro Road that are whole, complete townhomes that are just rentals, that could have been sold for property taxes and everything else, for people to actually own a simpler version of living in a communal area, instead of having to be rentals for the rest of your life. And then you're subject to whatever the landlords are billing at that time in constant increases, instead of giving people homes that they can own, even if it is in a townhome situation.
Please turn off all cell phones at this time. Thank you.
So, that to me, right now, is a thing that I believe that we need to, as a county, help start investing more into multifamily ownership locations. So, whether it's condos, townhomes, um, some sort of multi-complex deal where there is like a, a living and work situation, our living and retail situation, I think that we need to invest more into that, because it will bring people who are more under the age of forty here into this county.
Thank you, Ms. Gray, your time is up.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair. Ms. Gray?
Ms. Gray.
Ms. Gray, um, with the all-rental community that you're speaking about, um, that initially was in District Four, we were against it, this Board was against, I was against it. What they did was annexed into the city of Jonesboro, and the city of Jonesboro went ahead and improved in all-rental. So, I just want to give you the history behind it.
Next is Kobe Canty. Okay. Um, A-Lag... Y'all gotta give me, give me some help on this one. A-Lagbon? Is A-Lagbon? Okay, you good? All right, thank you. All right, Dabernay Freeman?
It's pronounced Dabernay.
Dabernay.
I don't know, I was under the impression that it was only like one sided sheet, but I would love to be...
So, I'll put you on the other one? For that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, next is Andy Pham.
Good evening, Chairwoman Dr. Anderson Henry, Vice Chair, Commissioner Reeves, Commissioners, and County Leadership. For the record, my name is Youth Commissioner Andy Pham, and I reside in District One, Morrow. I'm here today to share an exciting opportunity for the youth of Clayton County to become civically engaged and serve as change agents in their communities. Applications for the Clayton County Youth Commission will be open from March first to March thirty-first. For those who may not know, the Youth Commission serves as a junior board to the Board of the Commissioners. If you ever see a group of students in the back on the third Tuesday of each month in uniform, that's us, staying informed about what's happening in our community. This program has given me the opportunity to interact with you, my local government, and develop my leadership skills. To be eligible, applicants must be rising ninth, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grader residing in Clayton County. If you know any students who may be interested, they can access the application on the Clayton County Office of Youth Services page. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our county. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pham. And let's give our Youth Commissioner a round of applause for all that they do. Thank you so much. You all stand up one more time for us. Thank you. All right. Last on our list is Ms. Doreen Johnson. Yes, ma'am. This concludes our public comment at this time.
Madam Chair, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All right. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I need a motion now to approve the consent agenda.
So, move.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, Mr. Reed, can you come up and for item thirteen and thirty-five? What... Who's going to do thirteen?
Item thirteen.
Okay, who's going to do thirteen?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and yes, Attorney Reed could have come up for Central Services. Our request today is for a price increase, it is for a PSA twenty-two dash three-one-eight, which is, which is medical examiner services. It is an annual contract, uh, on behalf of the Police Department for Clayton County. The recommendation is to amend the current contract with Coswell Truman LLC, DBA is Clayton County Medical Examiner, located in Clayton County, uh, I'm sorry, in Covington, Georgia. This is a request for a price increase, which is in accordance with the contract in the Consumer Price Index. The description is for the investigation of each four deceased individuals. The request is to increase the cost by the four percent. This is going to be from one, one thousand seven hundred eight dollars and fifty cents with an increase of seventy dollars and five cents, so the increase is four point one, which is based on the CPI index, which we do verify in Central Services. The total cost would be one thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Funding is available through the County's General Fund. We have included the Department's Acceptance Amendment, the vendor change request, for your review and information. So, our request tonight is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairwoman or her designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize interim, uh, interim Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
So, move.
All right, I second it. All right, any discussion at this time?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. When is the expiration date of the original contract?
The expiration date, uh, I think that contract runs through, uh, January through, uh, December.
So, this is a new contract?
It is a renewal, so this is a...
A renewal, okay.
Yes, renewal, yes.
So, okay, all right. So, my next question is, we're tying it to the CPI. The CPI in January was two point nine, so where's the four point one coming from?
So, we... What we do is, we look at that previous dates, the previous timeframes, so they have to submit their change requests ninety days before the contract actually expires, um, for the renewal, because we're not going to renew you after we have agreed to do the, a renewal. So, this is just the paperwork catching up with the process.
So, October?
So, this would have gone back to either September or October CPI index.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so it's a renewal of the contract?
Yes, sir. And it is, and then they have to verify that, and we verify it on our side as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question.
All right.
So, you said, um, clarify, inside the contract, it states that they can increase based on the CPI?
Index, right, but they have to do it within ninety days before the renewal. If they submit it after the ninety days, and they have to hold that price that's in the contract for another year.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions at this time? Are y'all ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item thirty-five.
I certainly wouldn't want to steal any thunder from our great director, Madam Carol. Item thirty-five is Resolution two thousand twenty-five twenty-seven, which is a resolution to rescind adoption of a Clayton... I'm sorry, of a commissioned district delivery plan for mandatory county-wide curbside garbage and solid waste collection and disposal within the unincorporated areas of Clayton County. It authorizes the Chairwoman to perform all other acts to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. My whole rationale for putting this on the agenda was to begin, one, I didn't want to see any other potential items, line items, to go on the Citizens Tax Bill. Like we had heard earlier, many, many folks in Clayton County have residential trash pickup. For me, the discussion and the proposed program in place, to me, was not sufficient to, to counteract the issue beyond, or at hand with litter and trash.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Hamburgh?
Yes. I've been getting calls, and I've gotten them all along for the last couple of years that we've been discussing this. And the cities have mandatory trash pickup. And from the constituents I've received calls from, they too would like to have it. They were telling me how their bills, even my bill, has gone up so high in the last couple of months or whatever. So I would like for us to go ahead with the mandatory trash pickup.
All right.
Question?
Commissioner Allen?
Startup fee. Can you please, if anyone has the numbers, what would be the startup fee that the county would have to pay to get this service started? That's my first question.
Well, currently, the RFP, the Request for Proposal, that the Board had submitted to have this plan go forward, has now expired. So if there was an interest in wanting to go and do this again, we would have to, the county would have to put this out for bid, get responses back from any qualifying bidders, yes, any qualifying proposals, and then that would be presented to the Board for discussion and adoption if that was, or, sorry, a contract award, if that's what the Board would desire.
What is that date again? I thought that date was extended.
The day was February fourteenth, I believe.
So it's already passed. So basically, right now, there's nothing else that...
Did we get, did we get information on an extension?
Extension.
Carol?
So the actual RFP had an extension date, I think this was our seven extension, for two fourteen. So there was noth, so we did not move forward with the price increase. So if we were looking at doing that, then we would be back at the RFP start line or trying to go back to the vendor. But best practices is, we would need to start that process back over because that time extended to two fourteen, and that was a six-month extension that we did on the summertime. And that was for them to hold that initial price.
And the initial price was what?
I think the initial price was around thirty-one. It was nineteen, it was nineteen per month.
Nineteen dollars a month.
Right. Exactly. And that was for each district. So it would have been two vendors that we were looking at, and they would provide the same amount of service for the same dollar amount.
Okay. So with it being nineteen dollars a month, that would be, I know I pay about eighty dollars every, eighty to ninety dollars every three months. So that would be a big cost savings, I think, for our citizens. A very big cost savings for our citizens. But...
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, yeah. It would be a cost savings if they were not going to raise the price. But within that, let me finish. Within that, they have the right, the same way, is to amend that price. Plus, now we're asking, how are we going to collect that, those fees? I am totally opposed to putting those fees on the tax bill or having the Tax Commissioner have to begin to hire, to have to, to have to hire personnel, additional personnel, to cover the collection of those fees, to hire additional personnel that is still an indirect, well, that is a direct cost to our citizens, because who pays for those personnel? It's our citizens. I think as far as the concept of what we're trying to do is good, but as far as the execution of this plan, I don't see it working. Yes, we do have an issue with folks that are non-residential homeowners not having it, and we might need to begin to look at it for that, from that standpoint. But from the standpoint of putting anything on a residence tax bill, I am totally opposed to it.
Was that ever decided?
Yeah, did they say that it was going on the residence bills?
I don't think that was ever...
That was ever never decided.
And I'm not sure if it's the process, if how we were going to collect the funds once we would issue that notice to proceed in our, it's also a deferral.
Yes.
Chairwoman and Vice Chair and Board Commissioners, the process called for us, the Tax Commissioner was served as the conduit to get the bill out. It would not be put on their bill, but she would be the conduit to get the information out to the, to the citizens.
Thank you for clearing that up.
So it sounds to me that we don't even have a program in line that is concrete for us to begin to move forward. Like I said, I think in concept, granted, we want to clean up Clayton County, but it goes to a lot of the issues at hand that we have here in Clayton County are litter issues. They're litter issues. And litter, even being from tire dumping, any kind of dumping, those are still considered litter issues.
Well, I don't, I'm going to say, from what I see in my district, it is not litter issues. I see whole bags of trash being thrown in the middle of the street. That is not a litter issue. That is somebody who has not paid their bill, and they have thrown their trash in the middle of the street. And I have to call refuse control for my, for the citizens all through this, all throughout this district, all of the time, trying to make sure that we get the trash out of the street. If we want to grow our county, if we want people to come in our county as far as bringing our tax dollars to this county, as far as bringing builders to this county, we've got to clean it up. And so when people do not pay their bill, and they don't get trash service, they're going to, they're going to dump it, whether it be at the Family Dollar, whether it be in the middle of the street. So I'm just going to stand on, we, we need trash service in our county. No, I don't want to go up on, we are not going up on taxes. I don't ever want to go up on taxes again. How about that? But I do want us to have our county be beautiful, and I want our county to be clean. And I will stand on that, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Amen.
At this time, are you all ready for the vote? Anybody else have any comments?
Commissioner, I mean, Chair?
Commissioner Reeves?
Okay.
I just, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this resolution correctly. This is simply to, so rescind the adoption. So we have to start the RFP process over anyway because all of the contracts have expired. What, how does this resolution affect the current standing with what has been proposed for compulsory trash pickup?
So to give the Board and the citizens some history, in 2020, this Board stated that as a policy, you'd like to have the Solid Waste Authority look into a, propose a plan for how solid waste would be collected throughout the county. Solid Waste Authority proposed a plan which comprised of four districts. Each district would have ideally one hauler for each district, and that would be bid out for people, or RFP would come out, Request for Proposal, so not using acronyms. A Request for Proposal would go out, and if we had four people, four responsive entities, each of them would be assigned one district, ideally. This resolution, if passed, would go back to having the Solid Waste Authority to come up with another plan to, other than perhaps the four district collection process. If the, if it does not pass, then the four district plan still stays in place. It's just that you'd have to decide at some point whether to issue another RFP to see if you've got responsive bidders, or responsive people to respond to the plan.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And on top of that, to me, what this also does, it begins to really diminish the likelihood of small minority and local companies growing.
That's not true.
Okay? Because right now, as it stands, with the two vendors in place, and then here's the other question for me. What happens if a person doesn't pay? Are you going to take their home because they didn't pay the trash bill or take somebody's home? So I mean, granted, and that's kind of a rhetorical question, but we've got to begin to look at all of this. I think everybody, okay, I think everybody wants to see this county cleaned up. That is, that is not the issue. But I have trust in the homeowners that they can clean up their own property and leave it to me to choose who I want to wash my windows or pick up my trash, not the county.
And I just want to say, for the haulers, the smaller haulers, one of the things that the larger ones were going to do would let them do backdoor services for the seniors. So they were going to allow our smaller haulers to come in and allow them, when we say backdoor services, meaning if we have a senior that cannot come and pick up their, cannot bring their trash to the front of the, of their driveway, they were going to go pick them up, which would increase their number of people, because some of our smaller haulers only have about three hundred people. So that would increase a lot of them to one or two thousand people that needed that backdoor service. So they would, they would actually gain business by doing it this way. But I'll let you speak. Thank you.
Let me, let me speak to one thing, just, so, once the, there would have to be at some point an adoption of a solid waste ordinance that would spell out a lot of things of how trash would be collected, what would be the penalties, those type of issues. So some of the questions that you're asking would be answered through adoption, right, later. But that would be, of course, once you have somewhat of a chicken and the egg approach, do you have the ordinance in place and then you bid it out? Or do you bid it out and then put the ordinance in place? I mean, either way can work, but to answer some of the questions as far as, I mean, are you going to be taking someone's house? That's not very likely.
Exactly.
Don't put that out there because everybody's already upset about their taxes, and we don't need to be putting out misnomers. We need to put out the truth, and that is not the truth.
And I didn't, I never said that was going to take place. So let's understand. It's a, it's a question that I think we need to have to ask. And so that's why I think to rescind this and begin to go at it later days is the proper thing to do.
So I'm ready to call, are y'all ready to call for the vote? Are there, is there any more discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Two and a half years to come.
Yep. We're going to move right along. Next on the agenda is the Board appointment for the Water Authority. Rodney Givens' term on the Clayton County Water Authority will expire on February twenty-eighth, 2025. The new term is for five years, expired on February twenty-eighth, 2030. At this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Arvis Walker to the Water Authority.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right. The nays have it, and the motion fails. Next is Board appointment to the Water Authority. Next will be Dr. Cephas Jackson's term on the Clayton County Water Authority will expire on February twenty-eighth, 2025. The new term is for five years, expiring on February twenty-eighth, 2030. And this is an at-large appointment. Do we have any, do we have any?
Madam, Madam Chair, and this, this might be a question for the clerk.
Okay.
It looks like the Rodney Givens was a full Board appointment. Is that correct?
Yes, the BOC Chair made the last appointment.
Okay. So it's a whole Board appointment? Okay. So do I need to redo it then?
Right. Somebody else may have a nomination.
All right. Does anyone else have a nomination for the Water Authority Board?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move we reappoint Mr. Rodney Givens to that Board.
If we have more than one appointment, how do we, like if, if there's more than one candidate?
So, and let me look at this here. Looks like...
Well, I can ask for a second and...
Well, actually, you, I'm not sure. So normally, your standing procedural rules have where each, if you have more than five people, each Commissioner has a right to place somebody. So I'm not sure, is this the one that was earmarked for the Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then, in that case, then...
We did it right the first time.
That's correct.
But it says full Bar, full Board at large.
Right. But your, your standing rules say that if you have five or more, each Commissioner has a right to add, to, to appoint somebody to the... Each, each Commissioner has a right to appoint one person. And so I, I was trying to get clarification from the clerk whether this was the Chair's appointment from that full Board.
And that's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, for the record, I just want to specify, the districts, in the parentheses, is the district who made the last appointment.
So the first one that we just did for the, for the Water Authority, that one is my, like, all right. And then the next one, we're going to, this is at-large for Dr. Cephas Jackson?
Yes, correct. But District Three made the last appointment, correct?
Okay. So, so anyone can make, anyone can make the appointment for that Board?
Is, so District, okay, you guys, this is a lot, I mean, I understand now, but this has lost me for it. So I'm thinking this is District Three's appointment.
No, it's not. So it's an at-large appointment. So Dr. Cephas Jackson's term on the Clayton County Water Authority will expire on February twenty-eighth, 2025. The new term is for five years, expiring on February twenty, 2030. So at this time, I need a motion for the Water Authority Board, and this can be from any Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Dr. Cephas Jackson to the Water Authority Board.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is the Board appointment for the Development Authority. Tim Heinz was appointed on May second, 2021, to fill the unexpired term of Tom Duhon. This existing term expires on March first, 2025. The new term is for four years, expiring on March first, 2029, and that appointment is by the Board Chair. I made the motion that we reappoint Dr. Tim Heinz for the Development Authority Board.
Second.
All right. All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. The next one is for the Development Authority Board. Rich Mahone was appointed on June sixth, 2023, to the Development Authority. Mr. Mahone was removed from the Board. This existing term, this existing term expires on May twenty-seventh, 2027, and that is, is that District Four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I move that we appoint Mr. Keith Horton to that seat.
I second that. All right. This time, all right, is there any discussion? None at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, Board appointment for the Development Authority. Ms. Emma Godby was appointed to the Development Authority on March first, 2021. The existing term will expire on March first, 2025. The new term is for four years, expiring on March first, 2029. And that, is that District Two? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. District Two?
Yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Emma Godby.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is Item Forty-One, Board appointment for Development Authority. Mr. Randy Burden was appointed to the Development Authority on March first, 2021. The existing term will expire on March first, 2025. The new term is for four years, expiring on March first, 2029. District Three.
Clerk, can we table that until the next Board meeting, March fourth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Number Forty-Two, Board appointment, Development Authority. Jean Pierre Bourget was appointed on March 1st, 2021 to fill the unexpired term of Donald Cratt, who was removed from the board. This existing term expires on March 1st, 2025. The new term is for four years, expiring on March 1st, 2029. District One.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Jean Pierre.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is item 43, board appointment to the development authority. Ramona Bivins was appointed on March 1st, 2021 to fill the unexpired term of Mark Christmas, who was removed from the board. Existing terms expires on March 1st, 2025. The new term is for four years, expiring on March 1st, 2029. Now, is this an open seat?
Yes, this is a home room example.
Anyone can appoint on this seat?
Is which one? Is it open or District Four?
But District Four made the last appointment.
Oh.
Go ahead, I'm going.
Well, I wanted to appoint Brian Hunt from Clayton State University.
I'll second that motion. All right, is there any discussion at this time? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the nation, and the motion passes. Next is forty, item 44, the public hearing, HB 581. And this is our third hearing, ladies and gentlemen. And so again, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. We're going to first have a presentation by our CFO, Ms. Stacy Merritt.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. First, I'm going to have our financial advisor, Mr. Ed Wall, come up. He's going to discuss exactly what House Bill 581 is, and then I'm going to follow up with the impact of House Bill 581.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. House Bill 581, this is our third and final public hearing. House Bill. I got operator error. Oh, you're the man. Thank you so much. House Bill 581 was four different bills in the last week of the General Assembly in March, April of 2024. These final four bills got pushed into one bill called House Bill 581. It passed the legislature, signed by the governor, and it had a constitutional amendment that would raise the cap for sales tax from eight cents to nine cents. It was put before the voters of the state in November of '24. You can see that it passed with 63% of the vote, 3 million voted in favor, 1,008 voted against. House Bill 581 did three major things. The first one was it established a new floating homestead exemption that's tied to inflation. I want to make a direct point, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this has no effect on your existing homestead exemptions. This is a new one that you all would take into account, and you would either stay in House Bill 581 and offer that to your residences, or you would opt out. If you opted out, you would have the choice of making any other new kind of homestead exemption that you might want to do. Paragraph number two, the second thing that it does is it created a floating local option sales tax. So if everybody's in the floating homestead exemption, you have the ability to create a new floating local option sales tax that reduces property taxes dollar for dollar. It will work like the local option sales tax that you have, and I'll explain a little bit more about it later on in the presentation. The third thing that it does is it quote simplifies, end quote, how you do the process of levying your millage rate and your rollback millage rate each year. You all, as the commission, asked Stacy Merritt and me to give pros and cons of House Bill 581. We'll start out with a pro for the homeowner, and I wished my IT guy was here. Oh, he is. I don't know where he is, but he's the best. You're the greatest, sir. Thank you. So $250,000 would be the fair market value, the 100% value of a home here in Clayton. If the tax assessor came and sent out a tax assessment notice in March, April, and they raised that value by 6%, the new fair market value would be $265,000. The way taxes are calculated, that number is multiplied times 40%. Then you take away from it any exemptions you might have, and then you multiply it by the county's millage rates. So that 6% growth, that $250,000 home became $265,000. If the county stays opted in to House Bill 581, the limitation on what that assessment growth can be is the previous year's inflation rate. And so in 2024, the inflation rate was 3%. So that 250,000 times a, a, a 1.03%, if it's 3% growth, it'll be 257,500. The difference between the 257 and the 265 is the new homestead exemption, $7,500. That number will stay as a homestead exemption as long as that homestead owner occupies that house and continues to live in Clayton County and live in that house permanently. And it will continue on until that homeowner sells that house, and then it's all wiped out and starts over again from scratch. The 2024 general fund millage rate was 15.266 mils. That number times the new homestead exemption would be $114 in savings. And the fire millage is 4.146 mils. That number times the new homestead exemption would be $31. So 581 would save that particular homeowner of a $250,000 house $146. The next one is 500,000. Again, to go through the math, 6% would be 530. Inflation would only allow it to go up 3%, thus 515. Subtract the two, the new homestead exemption is 15,000. 15,000 times the millage rate, 15.266, is $229 in savings for the general fund. $62 on the fire fund for a total of 291. And you can see the $750,000 math, with 750, 6% is 795. At the inflation rate of 3%, would only allow 772. That's $22,500. That number times the county's general fund millage rate would be $343 in savings. And then times the fire fund millage rate would be $93 in savings. So that particular homeowner would save $437. How does the floating local option sales tax work? Again, I believe this was a carrot on behalf of the legislators. They didn't want anybody to opt out. And they gave you a carrot to try to keep you from opting out and said if you stay in, you could take advantage of a new 1% local option sales tax that will reduce property taxes dollar for dollar. It's a little bit different than the local option sales tax. Here in this county, we had an election for the lost sometime in the, in the mid-'90s. It rolls back property taxes to make them lower than they otherwise would be. A floss would be the same way. But a lost never expires so long as every 10 years, when the census comes out, the county and its cities negotiate how to split it, and they always come to an agreement. If they don't ever come to an agreement, then the lost will expire. With a floss, it can be levied by the county in .05 increments, up to 1%. The lost is a full 1%. So you could do it .05, .1, .15, .25, .5, .75. It, up to you and the negotiation with the cities is how much of that you wanted to levy. It can only be levied for five years, where the lost doesn't have an expiration date, so long as y'all agree on the split. A floss will only go for a five-year term. And if you wanted to have it, you all would negotiate with the cities and get an intergovernmental contract and put it before the voters. The earliest date is November. If you wanted to renew it after five years, you'd have to go to your local legislators, ask them to approve a local bill to allow you to, to put it back before the voters, renegotiate a new intergovernmental contract with your cities, and then ask the voters to approve it again in a referendum. This last bullet point's important. The only way floss is available is if you and every city in Clayton County does not opt out. All of y'all have to stay opted in. My conclusion for House Bill 581, this is a decision by y'all alone that only affects your two millage rates, the general fund and the fire fund. The school board has their own decision. Each and every city have their own decision. And so for the members of the audience, the county can only control what it does with its tax rate. It doesn't affect, they don't have any ability to control any of the cities or the school board. If you wanted to opt out, the only way you could do it is have three public hearings, all before March the 1st. And you would have to pass a resolution, opting out. And Chuck Reed, the county attorney, would deliver that resolution to the Secretary of State's office by March the 1st. Your decision is only after the third hearing, so it can come tonight, or it can come later, so long as it's before March the 1st. You all had to put an ad in the paper to make it look like you'd already made up your mind to opt out, but that is not the case. The law required you to use those kinds of words. And you all haven't made a decision, to my knowledge, about what to do. You wanted to hear from me and from Ms. Merritt and educate yourselves on it. You also wanted to educate the public and then hear from the public, and that's the purpose of these public hearings. Uh, one thing to remember is once opted in, you can never get out. This is a state mandated homestead exemption. All of your other local homestead exemptions, you have the choice to change them with approval by the voters. You would not have that choice if you stayed opted in. If you opted out, you could put back before the voters by going through the legislature and get legislation to create your own homestead exemption, and it could be even exactly like 581 if you wanted to. But you would preserve the option to either change it or, or get out of it later on if you wanted to. And then this last bullet, you all have to weigh the benefit of the floating homestead exemption in savings to the homeowner versus what it cost the county. And Ms. Merritt's going to talk to you a little bit about the cost of the county. But before I turn it over, today, the House, Georgia House of Representatives, House Ways and Means Committee adopted a substitute to House Bill 92, and they call it the Fix Bill. And some of the things that it does, it will extend the decision to opt out to the 31st of March, 2029. So you would be automatically opted in, and this homestead exemption would take effect. And if the cost was too great, you would have to '29 to opt out of it. So that's a new change that they made today. It has not passed. It was just introduced in House Ways and Means. It has to go before the House as a whole. Then it'd go to the Senate through a Senate committee, then the Senate as a whole. The other thing was, I told you that House Bill 581, it stays in effect as long as that homeowner to whom the house is titled is alive and they don't sell the house. Well, they've made a change in House Bill 92. If that homeowner dies, their surviving spouse can continue on with the homestead exemption. The rollback rate, they changed, remember, the third thing was it supposedly simplifies how you do the rollback rate. They put some dates certain on it. Ms. Merritt and staff would have to get to Mr. Emmett George, the tax assessor, your estimated budget for taxes, your estimated rollback rate by the 31st of March this year. And he would send out the rollback rate with the tax assessment notices, rather than you all do it in July like you normally do. And the other thing was that they defined a homestead exemption could be a house and no more than five acres. That's it, Ms. Merritt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any questions at this time, board members? Commissioner Hambrich?
Uh, yes, Ed. Are those proposed bills?
Yes, ma'am.
It has not been passed.
That is correct. And unfortunately, you all going to have to do what's written on the page today.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, so to House Bill 92, this is the Second Amendment, because initially it was prolonged later. Then they brought it back. And from what I understand, they were really trying to fast-track this through.
This is the third.
So their folks will not.
So this is the third version of that bill?
It's the third version of it.
Yes.
Okay, and also with that, have there been any cities thus far that have opted out of House Bill 581?
So it, our 11 o'clock hearing this morning, some citizen had said they heard that Lake City had opted out.
Forest Park.
Forest Park.
Well, so Forest Park has not. Forest Park votes on, Forest Park votes on February the 20th. So they haven't. But I think Lake City has.
So therefore the floss is not even up for discussion?
If Lake City has in fact opted out, it's over.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions at this time, board members? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Good evening again. So I'm going to bring to you tonight the local effects that we would see for House Bill 581. But first, I do want to tell you that regardless of your decision on House Bill 581, the goals for the budget would still be to meet the current and future financial obligations, maintain competitive salaries and retain experienced staff, reduce unnecessary expenses, be aware of increasing costs and inflation, and budget for the best services possible for our citizens. So some of the items that are trending up that are, as a result of our inflation that we've seen over the last few years, medical service fees, other contract services, repairs and maintenance on buildings, automobiles, gas inflation, utilities, litigation, and civil service case resolution. As far as salaries and benefits go, the last feedback we had from MAG was that we're making strides to fairly compensate our employees at the entry level. We're still a little behind on compensation in surrounding markets at the midpoint and maximum level. Some pros and cons to House Bill 581, so just kind of touching on what Mr. Wall said a few minutes ago. So the pros for our citizens would be increasing the current homestead exemption. This is an increase to it, this, the original homestead exemption will stay in place, no matter what your decision is. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
We'll also have some tax relief that includes steady and budget-friendly increases. The tax obligation would be tied to the Consumer Price Index, which is more stable and traditional than traditional appraisals. Some of the cons would be less opportunity for growth of services countywide, depending on our revenue income. Possible increase in other revenues around the county to maintain current services. We have decreased revenues. It may result in a millage rate increase to maintain services. And a decrease in expected fire fund revenue, which this will affect the fire fund as well, may lead to less growth and inability to staff new stations and man existing ones. And the fire chief will come up in just a minute and kind of elaborate on that. So for this hearing, we created what we thought would be just kind of an estimate of what our revenue impact would be from the opportunity of that revenue if we lost it. So what you're seeing here is the total digest representing residential homesteaded properties. We are looking at a standard across the board for three years of 6% increase. We're looking at the same homestead exemption across the board. So we kind of kept everything simple, same millage rate. Then on the other side, you'll see the impact with House Bill 581. Same exact numbers for the digest, except we brought that down to a CPI of 3%. Same millage rate, same exemptions. And then you can see where we would lose the opportunity revenue for the first year, and then it would build upon itself each future year. And this is the same scenario for the fire fund, same digest numbers, same percentage rates, and same exemptions. So you'll see those impact numbers there, and I'll let Chief Swett come up and give you some more details on how it would affect his department.
Thank you, CFO Merritt. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, thank you again. So very similar to what CFO Merritt just walked through, I'll kind of do the same thing as it pertains to the fire fund and those properties from within unincorporated Clayton County, as well as those municipal government properties that we provide services to. So once again, on the left, you see the three projected fiscal years moving forward without House Bill 581 being in space. You see the revenue that would be generated from those homesteaded properties. Once again, residential, this has nothing to do with commercial property. So fiscal year '26, my revenue just for those homesteaded properties would be 15.29 million, increasing to 16.35 in fiscal year '27, up to 17.47 million in fiscal year '28, assuming we had a 6% increase in property value in every associated year. And that 6% increase in the property value would be reflected on the tax bill. Not knowing what the next 36 months is going to bring, the scenario on the right lays out House Bill 581 should we opt in. Once again, the same scenario with a 6% increase in property value every year. However, as compared, with House Bill 581, the CPI is taken into account, simulating that a 3% CPI for those three fiscal years forthcoming, that's 3% of revenue that the fire fund would lose for the next three fiscal years. And as we're speaking to the CPI, I just want to state the average inflation rate over the previous 36 months. So over the past 36 months, from February of 2022 to January of 2025, the United States experienced significant fluctuations in inflation rates. Inflation peaked at to 9.1% in June of 2022, the highest level in decades, before gradually declining to 2.9 by December of 2024. Given these variations, the average annual inflation rate during the past 36 months is approximately 5%. So once again, if we opt into HB 581, this upcoming fiscal year, the fire fund itself is looking at losing roughly a half a million dollars in revenue. Fiscal year '27, we would lose. Fiscal year '27, we would lose an additional 1.04 in revenue. Fiscal year '28, we would lose an additional 1.6, assuming we had a 6% property value every year and the CPI remained at 3. Once again, not being able to predict the future, we're simply running a scenario. So with staffing of our fire stations, my daily payroll in a fire station runs about $4,600 a day to staff that station with fire apparatus as well as transport units for our medical responses. So for me to look to absorbing potentially up to $3 million over the next three years in lost revenue, that forces me to make some decisions when it comes to how our fire department looks in the future. So in the first year of fiscal year '26, if I had to take a reduction in half a million dollars in revenue based off my payroll expenses, our payroll expenses to include benefits is roughly 84 to 86% of my budget every year. So it only leaves us 14 to 16% of all that revenue remaining to simply run the day-to-day operations of the department. So to try to cut a half a million dollars in day-to-day expenses is extremely difficult. So I would have to look toward personnel to find that half a million dollars. So in fiscal year '26, if we opt in, then to basically take into account of losing that half a million revenue, I would have to shut down two pieces of apparatus every three days to make up that lost revenue. Moving into fiscal year '27, taking into account the additional 1.4 I'm going to lose in '27, I would have to shut down two pieces of apparatus every other day throughout the calendar year to absorb that loss in revenue. Looking at the last fiscal year, fiscal year '26, of leaving an additional 1.6, that would cause us to shut down two pieces of apparatus in the county every single day. So we would have to reduce the level of fire protection that is currently in space and what we and our community has grown to expect. One thing I do want to mention that I failed to mention this morning, as we've spoken to, the ability to impose a floating local option sales tax. If Lake City has opted out, then, or opted in, then that goes out the door. But one thing I want to point out, the fire fund is simply funded by residential, commercial, and automobile taxes only. Fire fund does not receive any type of sales tax revenue. So even if that scenario would be in play, and the board chose to impose the Flosst to make up for the potential district, that would not help the fire department because we are not the recipients of any sales tax revenue when it comes to the fire fund. So with that, one thing in closing, our millage rates have remained the same at 4.146 over the last several years. We have not raised those rates when it comes to the fire protection. The county has adjusted the millage rate on the general fund side, but the fire department millage rate has remained steady at the 4.146. So once again, in closing, if we decide to opt in, then the potential impacts to the fire service as we know it today could be severely impacted. And if we do have to look at shutting down units, that will have a downward impact when it comes to our ISO rating, which is the rating that kind of governs the residential and commercial insurance premiums in the county. That reduction in coverage will have a negative impact on our rating. We are currently sitting in an ISO Class 1, which is the best that you can get. But if we're evaluated and we have shown reduction in our coverage, then we will lose that one and potentially tick up to a 2 or 3, which will impact residential and commercial insurance premiums moving forward. So with that, I'll yield the floor back to the board unless there's any questions for me.
Any questions at this time, board members?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
I have is what is the, what is the total fund of the tax digest for the fire fund?
More time, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Okay, so what is the total of your file fund?
As it pertains to, to money? Yeah, the tax digest is going to be back, well, so if you look at the slide, the homesteaded residential digest value, once again, just the residential, those homesteaded properties is 4.2. Is that?
So you say you're 10? So if, what happens to the other six? Can that continue to grow, the other 6 million?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yes, ma'am. That will continue to grow. We did it just on what the impact would be, just for simplicity's sake here.
Okay. And for the residents, to be clear, the losses that you pointed out is for potential money.
Correct.
So it's not for the money that you already have allotted in your budget. So when we're talking about cutting expenses, this is on future money that we do not have yet. So I'm trying to have a better understanding on why would we have to close fire stations if we're already operating on the current budget now? And we're talking about future dollars we don't have yet. So my question is, how can we predict that we may have to close fire stations based on money we do not have yet?
So all of this is based on estimates. This is our best guess of what we could see over the next three years. So think of it this way, it is potential revenue. But when you're looking at the potential revenue, your inflation rate, your CPI, everything that we have, all of our contracts, some of our contracts have escalation clauses in them. If employees are to get a merit or a COLA, your cost of business for food supplies, medical supplies, everything across the board that we do, the cost of our cars, is all going up. So if you look at it that way, our revenues would, we would look at them both going up together. But if we know something's going to impact the revenues in the future just slightly, you're gonna have a slight arc the opposite direction. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. So with inflation going up, my next question would be, are there other ways that the county could get potential or other ways to get revenue besides opting out of House Bill 581?
So that is something that the, that Madam Chair is working on right now. It's not something I don't think we'll have in place in the next few months. But there is some definite, I think, good potential for some of the ideas that she's brought to the table moving forward.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions at this time?
For any of the presentations or just for Chief Swett?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to ask the question again that I asked this morning, which was about the estimate from the previous slide that didn't include any potential increases in commercial revenue?
Yes, ma'am. So what we did on this is just to look at the potential impact of the House Bill 581. We only pulled out residential homesteaded properties. Everything else will increase as normally appraised.
Okay. I have more questions.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, but it's, it's more about, can we just, and I'm a visual person, I really wish we had pie charts up there. Can we talk about how many, how much of Clayton County's revenue comes from property taxes?
I don't have that number in my head right now. I can get it for you, though.
Okay. And then, oh.
The fire fund is 97.7%.
Yeah.
Now, yes, sir. That is sheer property taxes, residential, commercial, timber tax, and a little bit of motor vehicle tax that the fire fund gets.
You're making it bad.
No, no, you.
I got that.
You asked me what percentage of the general fund was residential property tax, correct?
But not, not the fire, not the fire homestead. It's the, okay.
You're wanting the general fund, and I don't have that number in my head right now. I'm sorry.
And then of, of the percentage from the Clayton County general fund budget that comes from property taxes, how much of that is residential?
So some of those numbers were provided at the staff retreat, so we should.
Yeah, so Emmett can probably give you some more detail on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How is everybody? And I'm sorry, would you, I want to clarify your question, so would you, don't mind repeating that?
Yeah, it's like three questions. How much of Clayton County's revenue comes from property taxes? Of that percentage of property taxes, how much of that is residential? And then of the percentage that is residential, how many of those have homestead exemptions?
Okay. I can, from looking at the digest and what was presented already to you, so the total for the county, and this is going off of 2024, so last year, because we're still working on 2025 right now. So 2024, based on the total assessment for the county, that is, the total of all the values, was just over 14 billion of taxable value, which at the, that millage rate estimated about $215 million in collectible taxes, based on the digest. Of that, I don't have a breakdown of what is collected as far as the amounts, but I'll give you the breakdown.
Not the amounts, just the percentage. Percentage is.
Well, the total assessed value was 14. The total of residential is a little over 7.4. So it's about 50% is residential. Of that 7.4, the homesteaded is that 4.2 that's been presented because this House bill only affects the homesteaded properties. Yeah, I've got, you need the fire district information also? Okay. Does that answer, did I answer all three?
Yes, but I just, I also want to make sure that folks who are listening in, and before folks start giving their public comment, that they have an understanding of how much of Clayton County's budget is property taxes and how much of that is residential?
The, so the assessed value, I'll always say, I speak to the value. So the assessed value is right at 50% of the total value of the assessed county. So 50% is residential, and roughly 4.2 of the total of 14.1 million is homesteaded. So that's, no, that's about, what, 30, a little less than 30% right around of the total? 30, yes. Quick math is two sevenths and.
I have it, I have it, I have it at 50%. I just want them to.
50% is the total of residential to the county, but then we broke it down to the homestead, which is, this is a little over half of that 7 million. So yes, ma'am, it breaks down to about 30% homestead to the total county, 50% residential to the county.
Okay, so when we talk about the impact of HB 581, we're talking about a percentage of a percentage. We're talking about the percentage of residential properties that currently, or that currently have homestead or can apply for homestead. Because if I understand this correctly, the only property owners who can, who will be affected by HB 581 are individuals who already are in the homestead exemption.
Yes, ma'am. So right now, out of the just under 90,000 total parcels that we have, of those, a little over 84,000 are residential. And of those, about 42,000 to 43,000 are homesteaded. So we're looking at over half of our parcels are homesteaded.
And so, one question that you asked, Commissioner. So on the county as a whole, your general fund budget is about 300 million. Property taxes represent 200 million of it. Of that 200 million, about 60 million comes from homestead property people.
Can you say that number one more time?
Yes, ma'am. So, I hope I can remember it. So your overall total budget is 300 million dollars. 200 million comes from property taxes. Of that 200 million, 60 million comes from homestead properties. Did you agree with that?
All right. I just want to make sure that, that we know we're talking about a fraction of the budget that will be affected by HB 581. But also, I had some questions about how we assess properties. And I know that's, you missed it, Mr. Emmett. Okay. So I was on the Department of Revenue website.
You enjoyed that, didn't you?
Very much so. So a couple of questions. Okay. So I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly when it says that the state doesn't mandate how the county does valuations for property taxes.
It has a guideline. It has no mandation. We are mandated that every property is taxable until it's proven otherwise. So the, kind of the thing is taxation is the norm, except exemptions are the exception. But it does give you the guidelines that you have to maintain certain ratios. We have sales ratios and PRDs, price-related differentials, and all those other different things that we are then mandated to maintain. So while there isn't a mandated flow, there are mandated guidelines as far as highs and lows of sales ratio studies and different things like that, that if we don't meet those particular guidelines, we're subject to a, up to a $5, or I'm sorry, a $5 fine per parcel, which in this case would be roughly $450,000 fine if we don't maintain those levels.
Right. But the county as a governing body can decide how it evaluates property taxes, correct? Like in the list of market, market.
Well, we use all three approaches that are there for, so there is three approaches to value in appraisal. There's income, there's market, and there's cost. We use all three approaches. All three approaches are always given because you have a cost to replace new on all structures. Depreciation factors and other things like that go into that. Land costs are then added. You have in your income-bearing parcels, you have an income. So we look at all the different rates of, amounts of rent and different things like that, apply different rates based on the type of property. And then, of course, for mainly what we're here for, 581, you have also the market approach, which fluctuates from year to year based on the buying and selling of properties. And it's actually from the previous year because we're mandated to value your property every day, every year as of January 1st. So we're using the previous year's values to establish the current year.
So I just, I hear folks frustration. What they're saying is that their values, the values of their house has increased, which has then increased their property taxes. So my follow-up question to that is about this, the percentage change in, I wish I hadn't written on this, but the percentage change in residential assessments in the year 2022 and the year 2023, because those are both over.
Those are high, yes, ma'am.
Those are, those are over 20%.
Yes, ma'am.
And so if I'm understanding HB 581 correctly, the purpose that the state legislature, that they introduced this bill is so that no resident would ever in one year see an increase to their property taxes over 20%?
It just, it says, when you said the taxes, it speaks to the floating. Yeah, the floating is about what, the floating actually does cover the amount of change. So as actually Mr. Wallace showed you earlier on his demonstration, if a property went up, say, 30,000, but the floating, the CPI only says it should have gone up 15, the floating covers, that floating covers that extra that is taxed on. It still doesn't change my assessed value.
But it would change the amount.
Right. Now, understand.
That the property would, it would change the amount that the proper, that the taxpayer would pay on the assessed.
It would cover that difference. It would cover that difference between CPI and increase. Is what, is Mr. Wallace had on there. Is that correct?
If I could give just a real easy, concrete example. So let's say a house was $100,000, and it went up 10%, that's 110,000. Inflation was 3%. It could only go up 103,000 for tax purposes.
Not for assessment, for tax purposes.
So that 15.266 mils would be levied against 103 and not the 110.
Okay. Yeah, you know I have more questions, but I, I do want the, I know folks are waiting to speak.
Yes, ma'am. We reserve that right to always come back and have that conversation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Y'all finished?
Any more questions?
Any more questions, board members? Y'all sure? You sure? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, next we will move on to the part of, and I lost track because I'm about to. Next, we will move on, and we're gonna go into HB 581 sign-in sheet. Again, when you come up, please state your name and your city of residence. And we're gonna start off with Ms. Frances Solinger. You good? Okay. Next is Gloria McCain. Thank you, Ms. McCain. Next is Herman Dowden. You're good, okay. Did you want to come up, Ms. McCain? Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Chair, Board Members. My name is Gloria McCain, and I'm here today regarding the House bill. And what I would like to say, I do not want to opt out, and I just feel strongly about it that if I did, it would really hinder my taxes or my living, my well-being. And for that purpose alone, I really would like to say I would not like to opt out. I would rather stay in.
Thank you, Ms. McCain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Lottie Williams. Lottie Williams. Next will be Elizabeth James. Elizabeth James. Next on the list is Ms. Darlene Johnson. Darlene Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, neighbors, and friends. Darlene Johnson, unincorporated Clayton County, Rex, Georgia. So, I'd like to start off this evening, because I was here this morning, and found that some people were a little offended because I stated that reading is fundamental. So, I'd like to apologize for that. But again, I will say, as we saw today, our Communications Department received accolades, because our Communications Department is excellent. All the information that was needed as far as, as this HB 581 being on the ballot sample that we voted on in November, that information was out there. And it is up to the citizen to literally be engaged in, in county activities. We need to get engaged if we want to be a part of the change. The change cannot be that we just come here and complain. The change could be that we come here and offer solutions to our commissioners, to give them ideas, to bring them ideas, things to think about, ways that we could grow our county together. It's not just up to the commissioners. They hold the purse, but we also hold a vision too. We all have visions. And so, we just need to get engaged. We also need to understand which boards hold which purses. I hear a lot of stuff about the school board and the school this, and we're doing that. That is the Board of Education. Go over to the meeting for the Board of Education and address the board there. Address our superintendent, go and engage with them, give them ideas, solutions that may help with some of the issues that we have with our schools and what you figure or believe is a financial issue pertaining to the schools. Our county services cannot afford to be cut for any reason. And this House Bill 581, opting in, I've heard people say opt in. I personally would like to see our commissioners opt out of it. I am not willing to allow the state to govern the homestead, the value of our homes, and everything else. And as I stated earlier, this bill, they've tried to, to put into place for many years in Georgia. And from what I see on this bill, and what I understand as a advocate for Clayton County and an active citizen, is gentrification. And for me, for me, with that House Bill 581, those people north of Atlanta and Atlanta, Buckhead, all those high-end areas, they need to have their property values capped in order to stop their taxes, because they're already paying, while we're complaining about $2,000 or $3,000, those people are paying 30, 40, 50,000 a year in taxes. They need it to come down, because they too are struggling. And if they cap it to bring them down, although we're undervalued, when they cap it to bring them down, that money's got to be made up. How about they raise our property taxes? Our value, I'm sorry, the value on our homes, and our property taxes is going to increase anyway. Now, we're in a situation where we don't have a choice at all. We can never get out. And even with that five years, he told you, five years, that you may have to go back to the legislators to try, none of that's going to pass. Once it's put into place, you can forget about going back. There's not going to be a rollback. It's not going to happen. So, that carrot that they're dangling, right JP, as far as the floss, it's just that. It's a carrot. It looks good, because the difference of those taxes and the projections would then initially go towards our homestead, giving us a little bit more of an increase. And it's all based on inflation. Well, we know that inflation's going to skyrocket. We're, we're at the highest I've ever known. I've never paid $9 for a dozen eggs. Okay? And so, with that being said, if it's based on inflation, the inflations may not change for a while, and even when it does, our property values are still going to be at that time. They may be much higher than they actually should be, which is what we're crying about now. Oh, my house is not worth, uh, uh, $200,000, but they just built a $300,000 subdivision next to you. Yes, your house is. Okay? And, and, and I, and people were talking about apartments, apartments, apartments. I initially, and I believe that everyone deserves someplace to live. I do. And so, apartments is an option. But honestly, Clayton has a very old inventory. We have a very old inventory of housing here, because we're old county. Look, Jonesboro is absolutely beautiful. It's a niche city, but it's old, and it's beautiful in that sense. But we do need some new housing inventory, and I have changed my mind about apartments, because we are, we already have so much affordable housing. We don't need to create anymore. If they weren't affordable like that, so proud Republican came up to say the other day how proud she was to be a Republican, as if it's a dirty word to be a Democrat and to be conservative, but that she can only sell, when she's selling her real estate, she brings them to Clayton County to get affordable housing. Well, guess what? We welcome you for affordable housing, because we are one of the only counties in this area with affordable housing, believe it or not. We're complaining, but go to the surrounding counties. Most people can't afford to go to not one county around us. The next affordable place is Griffin. I suggest they get to going while the getting's good. Okay? Because that's the next and the only affordable place is going to be Griffin. They can't afford anything else around here. And so, we just need to be mindful that, that $4 million, I'd much rather have a $4 million, see a $4 million loss versus what it was before at $99 million. We can find a way to, to overcome some of that. We do have options to overcome some of that, and I'm confident that, that our current board has come together and are creating ways for us to create some revenue, and especially by not allowing any business, any builder come into this county at this point not paying taxes. Everybody pays 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, we have Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. And I've been there all the meetings, or listened in on all the meetings. It's very simple, in my opinion. We have to opt out of HB 581. We cannot allow the state to dictate to us what we need to do in our county. Secondly, we have a lot of concerned citizens, and I think Commissioner Davis, you was talking about finding a way to exempt the senior citizens and lock their, their personal property taxes in. I don't know how you, how far along that thought process is, but that's one way to tackle it. But, but my number one concern, and my state representatives and my state senators, they are operating under the gold dome right now. And we are a Democratic county, and it's ran by Republicans. Now, we are also labeled a Tier One county. We've got 159 counties in the state of Georgia, and 71 of them are determined to be Tier One. So, with that stated, we have a lot of out-of-the-box thinking that we possibly can take to Governor Kemp, because the governor, at this particular time, is sitting on $16 billion of surplus. So, as I look at the citizens coming to this governing body here, but I don't see anybody pressuring our state reps and our state senators, how can we collaborate together to go to the governor to help us get out of this Tier One status? You say our budget is $300 million a year? Well, why not ask for 500 million out of this 16 billion? Therefore, we can move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. So, our state reps and our state senators have got to come to the table. Our jail needs a lot of work. The governor got 16 billion. Why can't he participate in our jail, and same thing with Rice Street in Fulton County? You following me? Because we're a Democratic county, we can't get no funding? You understand? So, we have got to collaborate together with municipalities, the state reps, the state senators that say, we have got to put some pressure on the governor. Okay? Secondly, the mandatory trash service. We spent man-hours, and I, I hate to think how much countless money, two and a half years, two and a half years of our time and study to try to accelerate us and move us forward, because we have a littering problem, we have a dumping problem. So, we have to start somewhere in the embryonic phase to get something. Four years ago, the beautification program was taken away. Four years ago. Never was implemented. Then we come back, two and a half years later, mandatory trash pickup, simple process. We should have not rescinded it. We should have tabled it for further discussion, because it sounded like, to me, a lot of people had a lot of questions that could have been answered if it was done properly. To rescind something that we have already spent two and a half years on does not make sense. It doesn't make sense. It should have been tabled, hold on, let's take this, let's analyze it. Let's see how we're going to do it? Because me personally, I pay $75 a quarter, and that's a discount for me. So, $62 a month, $19 a month, come in at $62, you put the $2 surplus, you're paying $64. The citizens are saving money. So, I don't understand the logic and the thought process of just denying this trash service. It don't make sense. I call the sheriff constantly, send him pictures of people dumping trash bags, constantly. So, what are we going to do? Are we going to stay ghetto? Are we going to try to transform out of this Tier One status? But we got to make tough decisions. Every citizen is not going to be happy. We have to maintain a standard of living. Service has got to be paid for. That's the cost of living. So, at the end of the day, we got to find some other creative ways with our state reps and our state senators, because the governor has the money. So, how can we get our fair share? So, at the end of the day, we have got to start thinking outside the box. We've got to start collaborating together, especially with these municipalities, in order for this county to win. There's too much separatism, and we got to find a way to fix it. But in the meantime, y'all have a nice evening. Thank you.
You too, thank you. That was well stated. Next, Lamont Johnson.
Good evening, Board, and good evening to the public. Yes, ma'am, I was here, I was here this morning and learned a lot. In fact, I've been in Clayton County for over 26 years. I originally lived in Rex. 2018, I moved into Hampton. Came to Rex during the Olympics. I was told to come to Clayton County by my brother, he invited me. My daughter, I mentioned that earlier, earlier, that my daughter wants to buy a home here, and I was kind of reluctant. I told her it's probably not a good idea. And now, I've changed my mind. I want her to stay close because of the grandkids and whatnot. I've taught Sunday School. A lot of the kids that I've taught Sunday School to, grown up, and now are homeowners here in Clayton County, and they're raising their families. And they have the same issues that a lot of the people here in, in the room have, taxes. And although we have a lot of elderly people here that are having struggles with paying their taxes, we also have young homeowners with those, with families that are having those same issues. And we definitely want to keep the ones that we have. We want to bring in more young families, but we also want to definitely try to keep the ones we got. With the 581, I like the idea of having a cap put on taxes. But what scares me is that once we opt in, we can't back out. So, later on down the road, when we discover, oh, we made a mistake, we can't get out. And that's what kind of scares, that scares me. Because I'm looking at, down in the future, I'm looking in the future, and what if the state of Georgia needs property here in Clayton County? What's to stop them from pricing us out of it? And that scares me, that concerns me. Okay. I would like to see, I would like to see us opt out, because I don't like the idea of having our fire department running at less than 100% efficiency. Because that helps us, having our fire department running at 100% efficiency helps us bring in businesses. That's from what I understand. Me being boot camp, I'm putting this all together in my head. All right? So, what kind of concerns me is that there's a lot of storage spaces that are being built here. A lot of storage companies are coming in here. Gas stations were mentioned, liquor stores, oil-changing places. I mean, I can't drive down Tara Boulevard without seeing either a storage facility or an oil-changing station. It's driving me nuts. I love the ideas of the new homes. Granted, apartments are a good thing, that could be for, that could be for affordable housing. But affordable housing is, you know, decent homes, being able to move into a home, to become a homeowner. In that way, that's where the tax, that's where the tax revenue comes from. I don't, I don't know about people that live in apartments, I don't know if they pay taxes, but I know that if an owner has an apartment complex, and I've seen this before, not in Clayton County, but I've seen it in California, where if a owner, an owner of apartment complex finds that apartments are not profitable, they're going to let it go. And next thing you know, you've got this huge complex, apartment complex, with no direction, and eventually, it'll just go down, go down until the government comes by and buys it up and changes it into Section 8 housing. I've seen it. I've seen it happen. Eight housing. I've seen it. I've seen it happen. I've got a lot of questions. I'm not going to hit you all up for those because there's a couple of people. I've got business cards, so I can go ahead and ask those questions. But it's, I know you've got a tough job, okay? And I don't envy you. Don't envy your position. But I do hope you look at this 581 objectively. I think you do. I think you, I think you're about to make this decision. But we need to make a decision that allow Clayton County to grow and flourish, be able to steer Clayton County to a brighter future. Because when I came back in 96, in the Olympics, I mean, I mean, I wasn't, I said, "You know what? I love Clayton County. I don't think I want to go anywhere." But now, we've got potential. We really do. And I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but I just, I'm leaning, in fact, I would opt out, to be honest with you. I would opt out. Just because, one thing is, once we opt in, we can't get out. We're locked in. And I don't think Governor Kemp is going to let us out. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next is Adrian Howard. Adrian Howard. Okay.
No problem.
Next is Lisa Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Lisa Gonzalez. I'm a District Three. And I feel that we, as a county, need to opt out of HB 851. I don't want to be redundant. People have already made some points that I have on my little cheat sheet here, but I'm going to say them anyways. All right. I believe that we can create our own floating homestead. I also feel that if we opt in, well, we're already opted in. We have to opt out. Where am I? Well, our taxes are a way of funding services for our county, and if our tax base is reduced, then we will have reduced services in turn. This bill was introduced by a representative from a county where taxes are higher, and I feel that it's an attempt for the whole state to share the tax burden of counties that have high taxes, and I don't think that's fair to us. Okay. I feel also that basing the tax rate on the CPI or the Consumer Price Index is risky because it can fluctuate greatly, and the formula is vague. And in the case of assessing our properties at this time, if you don't agree with the assessment, you can go to the tax assessor's office to get them to adjust it, or at least meet with them to discuss it. But using the CPI, there's nothing you can do about the amount, and who at the state level are you going to talk to? You can't adjust it. Having the state mandate the method of tax assessment for 159 very different counties with different resources, different needs, different demographics, and even different climates, is taking away a county's autonomy and our ability to actually meet the needs of the citizens who live here. And a question I have, why does the bill state that you are not allowed to leave once you opt in? To me, that's very suspect. And another question is, who in reality, when you scrape everything away, will benefit the most from the Floating Homestead Act? Because in my experience, I don't think, and I hate to make it a partisan issue, but I really don't see that Republicans are looking out for people that are not like them and don't have the same mentality. So the fact that they are trying to push this through very quickly, make it very vague, also changing back and forth with the HB 92, it's like, what, what's really going on here? And I think if we maintain control of how we assess, we can come up with the solutions that are beneficial to us as a county. And I have been to commissioners' meetings before, and usually, there's only a handful of people, sometimes like five or six people. I think we, as citizens, need to really come in, listen to what's going on, be able to, you know, voice our opinions, and have you all act in our behalf. Because if you're acting in a vacuum with no input from the citizenry, you may be doing what you feel is the best thing. But without our input, you may not be doing what we really feel we want done, or what we need done. And I think that's it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next is Beverly Moran.
Good evening. I'd like to say, I didn't know I was signing up to talk. I thought I was just signing up to come to the meeting.
That's okay.
But since I'm here, I just wanted to mention just a few things that, like everyone has talked about already. But one, I want to speak on the ballot that was in November. We can't do anything about that. But the ballots, in my opinion, are written in such a way that the average person doesn't understand it. It's a bunch of jargon, you know? These ballots need to be written where a fifth grader can understand it because when you're voting, yes, you think you're voting to get something, but it really is the opposite.
Make sure you stick your name in your, um...
Oh, I'm sorry. Beverly Moran, and I live in unincorporated Clayton County.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. So that's the first thing. It's really difficult to know what you're voting for because of the way they're written. And then, a lot of times, they put multiple issues in one thing, and so you might like part of it, but that's another thing. I'm in favor of opting out. And the reason why is because it, I don't like anything that's permanent. Nothing. Only thing, in my opinion, is permanent is death. And this would be the death of Clayton County if we opted in, in my opinion. Okay? I personally have been living in Clayton County long before most of the people in here. I've been living here since 1986. Okay? And I've seen Clayton County go from sweet to sour, from the education system all the way down to everything else here. And I'm really, obviously, I love this county. I've been here this long, but I, the direction it's going is just not good. And taxes is a big thing. It seems like the, the middle people are the ones getting squeezed in everything, not just in this, but everything. The, the rich don't pay, the poor don't pay. It's the middle class that we don't have enough money to get assistance. We don't have enough money to be self-sufficient. But we bear the burden of everything in the county. And I don't think that's right to us. Okay? I'm a senior citizen, so I don't know how this affects me. But I fight for my children and my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren, who all live in Clayton County. So this is about all, all of them. The trash pickup, I know we're not talking about that right now. I'm in favor of that. The reason why, when I first moved in Clayton County in 1986, everybody owned their home. We, we knew our neighbors. Now, every home is a, the house next to me is a rental home, and every six months, they're getting put out. Okay? The garbage is on there. It is just, it's, it's, it's not good. If we had mandatory garbage collection, it's on your taxes. Somebody said, "Well, what are they going to do? Put you out?" No. But if it's part of your taxes, you're going to pay the taxes, or you're going to lose your house. Right now, I'm paying $100 a month for trash. If I can get trash for $20, and the person that lives next door to me doesn't care. They don't live there. They don't have a stake in that environment. They don't care. But the person that owns that will be made to pay that, and that will help me because I don't have to look at that. One more question, if you don't mind. I don't know if I missed it, but I did not hear us go over number 27, where Clayton County wanted to sell guns. Did we discuss that? Because I read that on here, and I'm like, "What in the world?"
So what I will do is, I will direct you to, is, is our police chief back there? If not, Starcher. Okay, Starcher. I will direct you back to Starcher in regards to the guns issue.
Okay. Is there any reason why it wasn't mentioned when everyone was here? Number 29, we went over almost everything else.
It's on the consent agenda.
It's on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's my thing. Opt out. I don't believe in anything that's permanent. They, you know, we don't have a way out. And once you get something in place, as you can see, as we can all know right now, in the last month, everything that's been going on, once you put somebody in charge that can change things, they start to change in things, and it's not so easy to get out of them. Okay? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next is, does that say Annette Anderson? Annette Anderson. All right. Next is Vivian Feliciano. Vivian Feliciano. Next is Woody Smith. Woody Smith. Next is Betty Harris, Ms. Betty L. Harris. Next is Willie C. Harris. Willie Harris. Next is Drew Andrews. I'm just going to say his name again. Drew Andrews. Next is Alvin Key. Alvin Key. Next is April, is that, is that Knight? April Knight?
Wright.
Wright. Okay. Are you coming up, Ms. Wright? Okay. Next is Dominique Grant. Dominique Grant. Next is, and I'm, I'm going to say, is that, I'm going to say, Welborn? Last name Welborn.
First name is Greg.
Greg. Okay. Greg, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get this handwriting up here.
My apologies.
I couldn't, I couldn't read it down.
Thank you for the counsel. Congratulations, Mr. Davis, for your fifth district. So I want to, I like, didn't even have to run for election in that one. That's dang good. My address, I'll, I'll keep it short. I know the timer's not running, but I will not yammer at you. I'd like to kind of step back from all the macroeconomics and all this. I appreciate all the display and all the numbers, which are highly confusing. Yes, I wish we had a pie chart, too. But anyway, I'd like to back up and let the, let the council think about why this bill is out there. I agree, it may be, sometimes when these things are so broad, they are favorite, they're, they're after an angle. But one of the reasons I believe it's out there is because of the, of the county assessments for Clayton. I know Clayton has had probably two very high millage increases. I think one was the largest ever in Georgia about 10 years ago. Lived through that one myself. Thank you. I'll live in, sorry, I live in Jonesboro. I didn't mean to do that up front. Also lived in Forest Park. I lived in Clayton for 40 years. I'd never cared about my property taxes and my, the two homes I owned until 2008. In 2008, the market crashed and burned, as we all probably realized. And guess what I got in the mail from the county tax assessor's office? A $25,000 increase in my home evaluation in 2008. So as I stood there thinking, "How in the world did this happen?", that's when I began the process of filing an appeal and going through the whole Board of Equalization. I've done that since 2008. I have never accepted the county evaluation. If I had not done that, this last millage rate increase would have pushed my taxes well above $4,000. For 2024, my taxes went up 33%. 33% in one year. And so thinking of that, when I saw this, when I saw this on the elections ballot in November, I'm like, "Yeah, I think I know why this is there now." Somebody has gotten irate enough and gotten the state involved, which we do not want. But I think this is a giant red flag for the county and other counties, like DeCap, who's done this also, and Henry, who has done this also, saying, "If you don't want the state to stick their nose in your business, do something about it." And I think that's where we are. I believe we have a red flag, and I believe that if we don't do something about this red flag, the evaluations on my home have always been way off-base. And I've always had to go, and I went through the whole Board of Equalization. I created a PowerPoint, and I talked about the businesses that were closed around me, and the vacant homes that were around me, and the trash being dumped on the side of the street. And all the county people want to talk about was, county tax officials were comps, comps, and comps. All right, how about, how about, how about the, all the businesses closing on Mount Zion? Tell me about that one. All right? All that affects the property value. Didn't want to talk about that. Comps, comps, comps. So I think the board has a hard decision to make. I don't envy your decision in this, but I think this is a red flag from the state saying, "Fix it, or we're going to stick our big Republican noses in your county." So I thank you for the comment.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Mickey Garber.
I'm going to make this short. I got to go to the bathroom. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. The first thing I'd like to say is thank you. Thank you to Mr. Ed Wall, Mr. Emmett George, Ms. Merritt, and to Chief Stewart. Why? Because they have given their reports about this for the fifth time. Only three times here. But I've gone to the retreat for y'all, the Development Authorities Retreat, and they were there to speak about this. And it takes Mickey about five times to garner any intelligence about what's going on. I don't want to get into anything that I can't get out of. That's the reason I've stayed out of jail. However, I want the best for my fellow citizens. A third revision means the state hasn't thoroughly thought out this House Bill 581. Mr. Wall said, "We can create our own 581 and change it anytime we want and not be locked in." If we do our own 581, we get to have the best of both worlds. Now, if we opt out, you, the Board of Commissioners, and Commissioner, Tax Commissioner Danielle Smith of the Tax Office, have to be immediate in your action to give the citizens who are retired and on fixed income the immediate tax relief as House Bill 581. Or else find yourselves as incompetent. To Commissioner Allen, respectfully, ma'am, you don't have to feel that you have failed your constituents by opting out if you immediately adopt your own 581 in-house. To address the gentleman about the fire department, no, you don't want a fire house being turned down or closed if your house is burning. no, you don't want a fire house being turned down or closed, uh, if your house is burning next to it, at a closed one. And remember, if you close a firehouse, there are those people, young people, who have young families working, who are gonna be laid off with them. So, you don't want, you want tax relief for your elderly and retired, but you don't wanna leave a young family hungry. The lady that spoke about trash, her trash pickup being a hundred dollars a month, she needs to find a new tax, a, a new trash pickup. That is the, that is the idea of having people who, competition in the county, that if you don't like your trash pickup, you get to hire somebody else. That's all I gotta say, I gotta go back.
Thank you. Um, next is Angie Spikes. Thank you. Thank you. Next is India Gray. Thank you. Carol Jones.
I do.
Thank you. Alicia, and I'm not gonna, um, I'm not gonna mess with your last name, Alicia. Alicia, Ms. Alicia? Zornicki, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live in Rex, District One, and I guess I'm speaking on a real estate broker perspective, especially to the appraiser, because I did multiple quote-quote, we call them BPOs, for the banks.
Ms. Alicia, state your name and.
Alicia Zornicki, Rex, District One, uh-huh, uh-huh. So, real estate, from a real estate perspective, when banks say, or ask me to do a BPO or a broker's price opinion on a property, we do apples to apples. So, if I have a house that was built in nineteen seventy, I'm not gonna compare it to a house that was built in nineteen, in two thousand. So, because a three hundred thousand dollar house is built next to a nineteen seventy, it's not worth it, still ain't worth it. Because this house is almost ready to collapse, and you got a brand-new, brand-new shoe or a brand-new penny. So, with the HB 581, I think, yeah, we definitely need to opt out. Because two thousand and eight, I was knocking on people's doors saying, you got to get out, the bank said you gotta go. And if, if it makes, if the taxes are increased where people can't afford their homes, I might be doing that again. That's not a good feeling. That's not a good feeling. And, okay, I mean, we got to do better. I've been in Clayton County for, I guess, twenty-three years, and even though the property value is going up, there's nothing here. I mean, I, I mean, you know, I go to Roswell, I can go to the movies, I can go to the theater, I can, what can I do in Clayton County? But go to Henry and give them my money, and I don't wanna do that. I mean, I will find stores in Clayton and try and go there and spend than go to Henry, but sometimes I'm forced to go to Henry, because I have no choice. So why the value's going up? What is, what is there in Clayton County that we can work, play, and stay? We can't. So, my thing is, for this bill and increase the taxes, first you got to do better for your people if you're gonna increase my taxes. See what I'm saying? So, even selling homes, where you wanna live, oh, I'm gonna live in Henry, I'm gonna live in Henry, I'm gonna live in Henry, you don't wanna live in Clayton? Uh-uh, ain't nothing there. So, I mean, and I live here. So, you know, like I said, from a real estate perspective, and even appraising homes, I cannot compare a home for rent for a home for sale. So that's not true. With appraisals, you, you cannot compare a rental home to a home that's for sale. Just don't work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Regina Claiborne.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I signed the wrong one.
Okay, thank you. And Stefan Claiborne?
Yes.
Okay. Yvette Span? Yvette Span? Piper Williams? Piper Williams? Mindy Morrow? Mindy Morrow? And this, are the Mars here at all? I have Ernest Morrow as well. Okay? Antoinette Richards? Thank you. And, let me see, is, I'm on, I'm on. Is that LaJean? LaJean? All right, I'm gonna move from that one. Richard Allrich? Keith Thorne? Keith Thorne? Esther Perry?
Esther Peters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the Board of Commissioners, officials, and the public. My name is Esther Peters, and I'm from District Four. And the reason why, um, I'm here tonight, um, when I read, um, a statement from the Board of Commissioners that, um, they're opting out of, I'm gonna read it, what I have here. Um, the governing authority of Clayton County intends to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year add valorum homestead exemption for Clayton County. When I read that, it, I didn't have any other information to go by. And it caught me off guard, and I said, I have to come to these meetings, at, at least one of the meetings. And one of the questions I have for you is, um, I understand tonight that if we opt in, uh, we do, our exemptions that we now have, we keep them, but if we decide to opt out, do we keep those exemptions? So we do keep them, that's good, that's good. Um, one thing I would like to say to you all, um, is that when you all make decisions, um, it's very important to us, your constituents, to let us know why you make those decisions. So we can have confidence that you did make the right decision, because you presented to us the reason why. I think that's so important. And I would also like to see, um, more, more education sessions, you know, in, you know, informing your constituents, um, about, um, what's issues. Um, like, for instance, I'm just giving an example, um, last year when we, um, voted for those amendments, uh, when we voted, um, I had to go and search to understand what those amendments were about, because there was not enough information. And when I look at, um, um, House Bill 581, in a nutshell, I'm an educated woman, I have an undergrad degree and a master's, master's degree. But when I read, um, House Bill 581 and what it listed here, I was still confused. I did not have enough information to understand what's being said here. And I think that we need to do something about this, that when we have to make, you know, um, important decisions, and 581 is a very important decision, we need more information so we can understand what is going on, so we can feel comfortable that you're looking out for us. And that's all I have to say, and thank you so much tonight.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I say something? Um, yes, Commissioner Davis.
Ma'am, I just wanna let folks know that. Let folks know, the way this is advertised, it was state mandated, whether we opt in or opt out, that the title had to be "The Intent to Opt Out." To have a hearing, that was state mandated, that that has to be the title, which is confusing, and I understand. So I just wanted to make that clarification. It wasn't that, we didn't, yes, we didn't write the bill, but the state said, in order to have a hearing, this is what you must do, and it must be titled "The Intent to Opt Out." Okay, so I just wanted to let folks make aware of that.
And another statement I wanna make is, if we had have, if we had went on and opted in, then we wouldn't even have to have these hearings. And which I think is not fair, because I feel like we should be hearing from you all, again, what you want to do. So, again, we had to, just as Commissioner Davis said, when we advertised it, it had to be advertised that way. But I do wanna make that statement, that if we opted in, we would not even have to have these hearings. And so, and, and so, you know, it's, it's like playing devil's advocate. But one thing we did want to hear is from our constituents. And we wanted to give you a chance to say how you felt, where you, we, hear your comments, and then that's when we will make our decision from there. Thank you so much. Next will be Lisa Gonzalez. Dabberne Freeman.
Hello, my name is Dabberne Freeman, I live in Riverdale. Um, first of all, I do wanna thank you guys for being here, I know you was at work, especially you over there. You been at work all day, and you still here, and it's almost nine o'clock at night. I appreciate you. Um, I just wanna say, hey, how y'all doing? So, um, I'm not gonna hold you guys, like, I am one of those young homeowners. I bought my home at twenty-five years old, I, first time homeowner in my family, uh, been here since two thousand and fifteen. So, and I'm, to be honest, when I heard about the people that told me they're gonna give me a loan, they either told me DeKalb County or Clayton County. Those were my only two options. And I said, oh, and we already know why. I got two black boys, and I'm a single mom. That's where they wanna put me. I kinda cried, because the only thing I know about Clayton County is the law enforcement gonna try to kill my babies, or they ain't gonna be able to read. Those are only two things that I know. So as me being a resident here, I was an active resident. I started my nonprofit organization that helps with free tutoring K through twelve, as long as you need it. And I also do organizations, um, I do events that bridge the gap between the law enforcement and the community. So we can bridge that gap, because we do have some wonderful law enforcement officers. And unlike anybody else, I love a good officer, because I love a pension and I love a uniform. So ain't nothing wrong with a good officer, honey. Some crazy, well, not all of them, just wanna throw that out there. So, and also, I'm hearing a lot of Republican, Democrats, I'm just here for the young people that don't wanna do OnlyFans to live in Clayton County. You know what I'm saying? So, I'm not anybody, I'm just here for the working people. Um, so like I said, I've been in here for a minute, and I was scared because of the education system, I was scared because of the law enforcement, I was scared that, you know, it's thirty-five children to one teacher. But like we said before, that is about to be the Board of Education, and not you guys. But unfortunately, we may not have that soon, so you never know, uh, for it. But, I just wanna say that all of these, everything that everyone was saying with the numbers and things, it's like Charlie Brown's teacher, wah, 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 to me. I don't understand it. You know what I'm saying? Only thing I know, leave it alone, plain. If my house was a hundred thousand dollars, I don't wanna pay taxes further than that, 'cause yet again, I would have to be on OnlyFans to work, to be here in Clayton County. Ain't trying to say I ain't got no money, but I work for the state of Georgia, we ain't got no money. Okay, at all. And like we said, there's only liquor store, I can't, I personally, I go to Fayetteville. I take my children to Fayetteville. When we wanna do something, there isn't really anything here that I will feel safe in order to do. Um, I do agree with the trash situation, it is disgusting. It really is. I do feel as if we have somebody to open up that trash and get a number out there and charge them for putting it out, to put it on there.
We do.
I know. I know. So, but that's just basically what I wanted to say, and I'm not gonna hold you. If you don't live in this county and you talking about what's beneficial for me, I side-eye you. 'Cause you don't even live here, my boy, you know what I'm saying, like? Side-eye, sorry, I do not know how to say it professionally, but I will side-eye you. Um, honestly, and like I said, it's very confusing. It is very confusing, I know you guys do not control how it's written, how the ballots are, what it is. But when it comes to, when I'm knocking on doors to try to get those eighteen-year-olds to register to vote, they call my organization, say, hey, Ms. Freeman, love you to death, I'm not going back, 'cause I don't know what it says on those ballots. They don't understand it. And the only thing I can tell, let's, let's read together, let's go, 'cause I can't be there with you. Let's do these ballots before it comes out, but it is very confusing, you guys, it is very confusing. But I do wanna say, I appreciate you. I don't know the terms where you would opt in, opt out, I just know, please don't raise my taxes, please. God, please, I don't wanna do OnlyFans, I don't wanna do it, okay?
We hear you, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you so much.
Next is Mr. Doreen Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Doreen Johnson, I live in District One, Unincorporated Morrow. I have Kroger's Truck Depot behind my house. Ooh, disgusting. They still haven't put up a barrier, but that's not why I'm here. What brought me here was House Bill 581, and I am absolutely against getting into anything that you can't get out of. Okay? I spent thirty years on the Philadelphia Police Department, I made millions, thousands of arrests. And I always told them, you're going someplace you can't get out of. I don't wanna be somewhere I can't get out of. Second thing, when my house was built, everything, including the blueprints, said my house was twenty-one hundred ninety-six square feet. When Clayton County assessed my house, they assessed it for more than twenty-five hundred square feet. I've been ten years trying to deal with the, um, Tax Commissioner's Office to get it reassessed. Somehow, I keep getting the same lady on the phone who tells me, there's nothing we can do about it. Why? Therefore, I am paying more taxes than I should be paying. And I'd like to know what can be done about it.
So, what I would have to do is refer you to the tax assessor, and I was trying to see if he was still over there, but I think he is, he is gone, but I, I.
God, I wish I knew he was here.
Yeah, he was here. Um, so I will definitely, uh, get, get, I'll get the number for you, and I can have him to call you, or get your number. And can, I'm trying to see, can you, you'll get the number, okay, Chief Swett will get the number and have him to call you.
Okay. And the other thing, when I moved here, I truly appreciated how clean the streets were. And I'm along with a number of other people in here tonight, the trash situation has gotten way out of hand. I mean, you ride down the street, there are mattresses, refrigerators, old furniture, washing machines. It's, it's gotten way out of hand. So I think, and across the board trash pick, I come from Philadelphia where everybody.
Everybody has trash.
Right. You know, um, certain areas of the city even hit trash pickup twice a week, because they produce more than other areas. But, I, I think that would be far better than, than what we're going through now. There are too many, too many homes that have become rental properties, and they don't care. I happen to be the HOA president for our development, and thankfully, the bill that was passed, no one else can, um, no other LLCs can come in and turn any of the homes in our developments to rental properties. So, I was happy to, to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. At this time, is there anyone who did not sign in that would like to speak? Yeah, I'll start from over here. Okay, I don't have it.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Boyd. I've lived, I live in Clayton County. We moved here from Detroit, we've been here ten years. Um, I love my community, um.
What, um, what, um, what's, state your, um, city?
I, I live in Jonesboro.
Jonesboro, okay.
Yes, I live in Jonesboro. The date, two, two months after, we came here and we started renting. Two months after, um, we were renting, we decided to buy the property. And when we purchased the property, um, it increased ten thousand dollars the day that we signed. So we, we bought in a good, uh, on a good, uh, area, and it's increased. But what I'm concerned about now, um, is that it's a lot of homes. Our house is a four-sided brick, and it's a lot of homes that's being built that are. that are not the same quality as our home. And, but, the cost of the homes are much higher than our homes. I don't understand that, even though our house is very well constructed. We signed up for the Homestead Act, and it decreased our school, the school taxes went down. And it decreased our, our mortgage payments, so we were really pleased about that. However, we're still concerned about items in the area. It's a lot of homes that's being, I'm real concerned about the quality of homes that are being built in the area. Does not compare with the homes, even though it's an older home. It's, the construction of that home is much better, so I'm not really sure. We're not comparing apples to oranges. I mean, it's no comparison. A four-sided brick and a, and a completely framed house, it's, it's just not the same. Needless to say, I mean, I, I just wanted to throw that out. Because I'm concerned, we're in our seventies and we're considering, because our house is, is rather large, it's a five-bedroom, we don't need five bedrooms now. But will we get the same break in the Homestead Act if we bought a new home? Will it, will we be grandfathered in, or will we have to pay more in taxes? We would have to pay more in taxes.
You'd have to apply again.
You had to apply again.
And just, you, you would just need to apply again in your new home.
Okay. Okay, that's the only difference. Okay, I got, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, I didn't hear you.
No, I'm saying, no grandfather, it's what it is the day you purchase it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, she want to speak next? Okay, you, you can come up. But no, no, she's coming up first, okay? And then, I think the young lady in the back.
Well, good evening, everyone, the Board. My name is Crystal Woods, I am in Jonesboro. And I've sat, I've listened, and I even attended the prior meeting. One thing I would like to say is, let's talk about marketing. The definition of marketing is the activity of business or promoting or selling products or services, including market research and advertisement. I say that for a reason. When election season comes and campaigns start, politicians run on promises create, to create solutions to win the vote. We vote for politicians on local level and on the state level, and at of course, national level. And oftentimes, when politicians get in their seat, they reform back to the status quo. They reform back to the good old boys' way. We are in the year of 2025, age of technology, age of innovation, age of knowing. Yet, there are no innovative solutions presented to the citizens of Clayton County. If I, if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, Hartfield-Jackson Airport, the largest airport in the world, sits in Clayton County. Or a large percentage of that airport sits in Clayton County. Clayton County is not receiving enough funds from the airport. Why is that? Why have not, why the politicians of Clayton County have not demanded the money from Clayton County to solve these problems? That's innovation. That's creativity. I purchased my home in 2008 in Jonesboro. I was working in Alpharetta at the time. Everybody wanted me to move above I-20. Do not move below I-20. I'm a city girl from LA. I needed to be centrally located, I needed to be near the airport. I needed to be near interstates. Clayton County fit what I needed to get in and out. The interstates, you're within fifteen minutes of 285, 75, 85, Connect 20. It's a perfect location. But yet, Clayton County is suffering. Why is that? And from what I can tell, several years ago, there's been a huge mismanagement of funds from a project that was supposed to be developed. But there's no accountability as to where that money is, where that money went, what happened to this money? And Clayton County is suffering, and we're talking about raising property taxes on the citizens of Clayton County. Now, I don't have percentages, I don't, I don't know the demographic of how many seniors is, is in Clayton County. But I do know we just completed the Intergenerational Community Center off of Flint River, which is around a corner from my home. So that tells me that there are quite a few seniors in Clayton County. And from what I've heard, there's quite a few here who've been here for a very long time.
Keep your comments towards the boards.
Sorry. Been here, I guess I am talking a lot, y'all do. Been here for a very long time. Getting back to the taxes, this bill was a major red flag. You brought, brought in the presentation to show what we would save, but you didn't show the impact. A hundred and fifty-dollar savings is not going to do anything for a homeowner who's paying five thousand dollars in taxes and insurance. Because when the taxes go up, everything is going to increase. You have, you want to bring new home buyers into the area. They're going to be bound to a, a homeowners association, which are fees, dues, which is going to be escrow on a new home. So there's no way they can get around that. Clayton County is suffering when there is money out there on the table. Clayton County is not asking or demanding the money that is owed to Clayton County. So the Board, my question for the Board is, where are you going to bring in your innovation, the technology in this age to get the money back into this county? I've heard people talk about the commercial buildings, or the commercial companies. There's money here, y'all got to find it. You have to find it, or you're losing, you're going to lose your current residence, and the stigma of moving here is going to remain. There's a lot, there is a lot that, that is offered here. This can be a beautiful place to live. I've been here, obviously, since 2008. And I know you guys have a very difficult job. We voted for you because we believe you can do the job. We voted for you because we believe that you're going to be making decisions based on our best interest for this county. That's why we voted for you and not your opponent. So we, but, but, but we're here begging you to make a decision that's going to help us. Why are we begging you? Why are we begging for something that we believe you was going to look out for our best interest anyway? So, as I close with this, I think moving forward, there needs to be more accountability in terms of how money is spent. I don't know how y'all figure that out. And the last thing I'll say about these property taxes, in 2023, my property taxes increased eighty-two percent in a two-year period. Eighty-two percent. I work in the, in risk management industry. I called, and they said, well, the comps, this is what your property is valued at. And we know about the comps, we know about the errors, but the onus is on me to correct it and challenge it. And I only get three weeks to do that. That whole process need to be changed, need to be reevaluated. So if we have to challenge or have a conversation about these property taxes and these comps, we need more time to do that. I thank you for your service, I thank you for what you're doing. And I believe that in 2025, the way you market it, and the way you advertise, the way you solicited a vote for your role, you're going to do the same thing to get this money back to Clayton County. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. There was somebody on this side that raised their hand. Was that you?
It was the first.
Okay, and then, okay.
Good evening, Lou Philibingson. I listened at the two people right before me, and I can't remember their names.
What city, Mr. Livingston?
Excuse me?
What city?
I actually live right here, right here in Jonesboro. I don't want to call pretty Jonesboro here. I am, am an aspiring developer here. I want to build here, some homes here. But I've been listening to some pretty disparaging things here this evening, so now I'm not sure that I'm going to do that. But I want to do that, because it's something I've dreamed about, ever since I've owned this property for more than fifteen years. I own a piece of property here that I want to put some senior living homes on. Very nice, because I've already done that, done that marketing research, and I know what people are looking for. And I do know, because I'm going to be a senior here real soon, and I might want to downsize myself. But anyway, that being said, I, I want to know how we need to get past different things, like the stigma that everybody's just been talking about here. But they give, they give it real short analysis, they give real short presence. But there is a stigma, there is a stigma, okay? That stigma comes from probably a lot of things that we don't have anything to do with, never had anything to do, and never will. Okay, we have dark skin, okay? We have not as much education as someone next door to us. Whatever it is, that needs to stop. I want to build here, so please tell me that I can and I want to, because you're going to see me again. Thank you.
Thank you. You can. All right, next.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Commissioners, Judith Cotton, District Four. I have so much to say, but I'm going to narrow it down. Okay, I'm against opted-in, period. As a real estate broker, as the other broker said, you know, I did a million BPOs when 2008 came. And I don't want to do that again, because that means foreclosure. And as a real estate instructor, I teach taxes and the military, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I've gotten a million questions from my students as well. So I definitely would tell you that not one person was, you know, opting in, wanting to opt in. So I would like for you to please opt out. But what I want to say is that, as the gentleman just said, he wants to build here, he wants to develop here in the county. And I think that's what we need. I don't think, well, I am a senior too. I'm not saying that, you know, we shouldn't have senior build, you know, housing, but we need tax dollars. So I'm just saying we need some single-family residential properties built here, not apartments. We need some tax dollars. Yeah, we could have some senior, we could have some veterans, you know, I know as a veteran, we get our discount, thank you. But we do need property taxes, and I think that would help us. And in closing, I think we need some anchor businesses here, some anchor stores here. How do we go about doing that? Is it county, are you commissioners petitioning for these anchor stores to come to the county? I know it's a difficult task, but still, I think if we get the anchor stores here, get some more property here, single-family residential properties, I think that will take away that negative, you know, that we have for the county, you know, the schools has approved a lot, I know they have. But I think that's what we need to do, get the anchor stores, single-family residential properties, get some taxes, and I think that will help us out, and definitely opt out of 581, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? In the hat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tammy Poyet, I live in District Three. The city, county of Fayetteville, but, I mean, the city of Fayetteville, but the county of Clayton County. I bought my house roughly about twenty years ago. When I bought my house, my house was affordable for my income, being that I'm retired police officer. However, we didn't make a whole lot of money, so I had to come to Clayton County in order to purchase what we call used to be an affordable housing. I really appreciate, it's kind of confusing, like the young lady, young lady said previously about the opting in and opting out. I really appreciate you guys making your decision to benefit the citizens of Clayton County. I really appreciate that. My problem is that I want to be able to stay at my house. I did some major renovation, and I love where I live, I live in a HOA community. However, we have a lot of potholes in the street. And when I leave my driveway, there's a big pothole right in front of my house. So if I'm paying seven, eight hundred dollars for HOA fees, and I call them and ask them, who's responsible for the potholes in my, in, in this community? And they said, I have to contact you guys. So, if I'm paying all these taxes, and I just got a bill with the tax increase of an additional three hundred dollars. So I'm having to decide, do I pay the tax bill, or do I buy groceries? And everybody know everything is already expensive. So to get an additional tax increase, it's ludicrous. I mean, we got high grocery bill, gas going up. My daughter's twenty-eight years old, college graduate, my son is a college graduate. Thank God that he bought his house four years ago, before all this craziness, madness took place. But my daughter is twenty-seven, twenty, just turned twenty-eight, can't even afford a house, and she got a master degree. I got a bachelor's in human services, a master in social work. And I, and I still doing okay, but I could be doing better. But I don't need any more monsters on my back, if you, if you will. So I appreciate you guys taking the time out and saying, hey, we don't need no more on the citizens of Clayton County. I appreciate that. I don't know who has the authority or whose responsibility it is to take care of all the potholes in Clayton County, because I've had two flat tires, and I had to pay for that out of pocket. So who's, who that responsibility to be able to follow?
Ma'am, you can contact your commissioner, your District Three Commissioner.
That would be you, Ms. Allen?
Yes, ma'am, you can contact, and she will take care of you.
Your, your, your husband worked with my, we're not going to get into that. But I, I, I think he's, he's real good, and I appreciate it. And so I, I will contact you for the potholes, and, and I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
You know, we're not here to point fingers, we're just here to get the job done as a whole. And we don't need any more taxes. And I, we also need the fire department, we need you all, we, we need them. And however, we come up with a solution to get them what they need without taxing the citizen, then we're to do that. And we're here to help, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
All right, at this time, is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Well, this closes out and ends our hearings at this time. We are going, do we have a need for executive session? I know we do, Chuck, I can see that smile on your face.
Yes. Litigation and real estate.
All right. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for litigation in real estate?
Can I point a privilege?
Yes.
Okay. I want to first thank everyone for coming out and expressing what you, what you, is on your mind with this. But I also want to let you know that we have an East Plots coming up. And we're talking about how to really begin to increase the beauty and the services of this county. The East Plots is through the Board of Education. It is something we want to look at voting for, to begin to bring in money and revenue to this county in lieu of property taxes.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. All right, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So, so move.
Can I get a second? I'll second it. All right, is there any discussion at this time? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstention, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Can I get a motion to reconvene the meeting from executive session?
So move the second time.
Second at the second.
All right, y'all ready? All in favor, say. Yeah, y'all ready?
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. We are back from executive session.
Do you want me to take them together?
Take them all.
Okay.
Which may have to keep one out.
No, no, this is, this is the real estate. So we have two purchase and sale agreements. The first is for tax parcel ID 1302. The first is for, um, tax parcel ID one-three-zero-two-zero-B-C-zero-two-four in an amount of sixty-one thousand dollars. And the second is, uh, tax parcel ID number one-three-zero-two-zero-B-C-zero-one-nine in an amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And, uh, authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expense as required under the terms of these agreements.
All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. I second it. In discussion? In discussion at this time, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Is that it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we going real slow. All right, at this, um, at this time, under motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Calm down. No, you want to stay longer. I need a commotion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
All right, in discussion. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you.